Good evening. I call this March 16th, 2021 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. On March 19th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email Town Clerk at townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will conduct a roll call of council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamello?
Present.
Councilmember Robb?
Present.
Councilmember Robbadi?
Present.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I'll make a motion to invoke Rule 19.
Thank you. Looking for a second in chat. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robbadi, please.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robb?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamello?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19, passage and emergency.
Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 4, Discussion Items. There are five discussion items on tonight's agenda. A Parkland PIL slash Parkland Dedication Discussion, a Revenue Special Topics Discussion, a Bond Referendum Preliminary Ballot Language Preview and Debt Capacity Follow-Up, a Retreat Debrief, and a Town Council Brainstorming/Roundtable Session. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate our first discussion. Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, Council. Okay, I got control. All right, so good evening, Council. Great to be back before you this evening. This is the second half of my presentation that was planned for retreat. This session is focused on the town's policies regarding Parkland Dedication. So let me start by identifying in a little more detail, you know, what I was hoping to discuss tonight. So Section 5.5, our UDO, identifies both common open space and public recreation area. Just want to get some background. These two are not the same item. Common open space is for commercial sites, and the town would never take ownership of these areas. This is usually met through, the requirements usually met through a walking path, outdoor seating areas, gazebos, educational sign engineering, environmental features, and things like that. So what I'm hoping to discuss this evening is specifically public recreation area. This is, the public recreation area is required for residential developments and is intended for folks that live in these developments to have a place to get outside and enjoy the outdoors. So basically, the general thought behind it is, you know, some of the neighborhoods or developments are dense and might not have a place for people to get outside, so this would allow the town, or it does allow the town, to dedicate some kind of parkland. So the town can require developers to dedicate land intended for recreational use that the town actually takes ownership of, or we can accept, we can accept a payment in lieu of these, this land. So I've done some research from surrounding communities, you know, Morrisville, Cary, Apex, Holly Springs, all accept a payment in lieu and very rarely actually accept land dedication. So that's a little background. Let me jump into actually my presentation. So what are my goals tonight? Same, same goals as I had with the tree preservation at retreat. So I really want to give you an overview of our, the town's current requirements, understand if they kind of align with town council's goals, and if not, you know, are UDO text amendments needed? And then I'm hoping to really bring, you know, any text amendments that might be needed back with the tree text amendments that I'm also finishing up, so. All right, so as I said earlier, single-family subdivisions are required to convey public recreation space to town, and this is a regulatory power granted to basically every town across the state. Morrisville actually has local authority to also require dedication for multifamily developments. The town is actually one of the few across the state that has the authority. Also, the town almost always receives a payment in lieu instead of actually land being dedicated to the town. Okay, so this is the local bill. I know it's a lot of text on the screen, but I'll narrow your focus in a minute. So this is the local bill that allows both Cary and Morrisville to require partial payment of funds and partial dedication of land for multifamily development specifically. And the reason I included this slide is this last sentence, and I hope you can see my mouse, starts with "the ordinance may allow." Basically, this sentence says that the town can require a combination or partial payment of funds and partial dedication of land for multifamily development. So, you know, in talking this through with our town attorney, it's fairly clear, I think, that the town can require partial dedication and partial payment, but cannot require 100% land dedication for multifamily developments. And there's a certain formula which dictates how much land would need to be required, required to be dedicated, and I'll kind of get into that later in the presentation. So here are the formulas for how staff and developers determine how much land or payment in lieu is required. Based on these formulas, I'll go over in the next few slides, I've got a few visual representations of what these formulas currently result in. And I can go a little more in-depth to, you know, these formulas if you'd like, but for now, I'll move on to more of the visual representation for what the town actually gets currently. Okay. So just like I, I had with the trees at retreat, these are the same two neighborhoods. We'll start with the subdivision example currently. So this is Meyer Point Towns. This is along Church Street, right near Downing Glen. So for this subdivision, the town actually received payment in lieu of a little over So the scenario I've run below that is if, instead of receiving that $337,000, if the town had required this neighborhood to dedicate parkland, the town would have received about 2.82 acres, which is roughly that size of the green area that I've drawn on this, this aerial shot. Now, the exact form we would have gotten would depend on the design standards that the UDO has, and we're going to talk about that a little later, but this is just an example if, you know, instead of receiving any payment in lieu, we had required them to dedicate parkland. That's, that's kind of what we would have gotten. Okay. So the second example is for a multifamily development, and this is Broadstone Trailside. It is along McCrimmon between Church Street and Town Hall Drive. This development ended up paying the town $563,000 in Parkland PIL. And below, I have shown if they dedicated half of what they required land dedication and then paid the other half that was required in PIL, what this would have looked like. So if you remember a few slides, I said the town would not be able to require 100% land dedication. This is just an example, say, if the town were to move forward with requiring land dedication, you know, just an example, 50% would be land dedicated, the other 50% would be PIL. So you can see with this split, there's still a decent-sized chunk of land that would be dedicated to the town as well as the PIL. Again, the, the exact location of the land would determine, would be determined by the development standards of the parkland. So there's just two examples of what, you know, if, if the town did require some kind of land dedication. So I've referenced these design standards a few times. This, this is what the UDO currently says. So if a development were to dedicate land, it would have to meet, that land would have to meet these standards. And so the reason these are critical is, you know, if, if council decides they want to move forward with having more developments, actually dedicate physical land to the town for the town to own, maintain, maybe plan activities on, it would need, it would need to, it would need to meet the design standards in the UDO. So this is where we may need to tweak these standards to really get the kind of land the town would be interested in. So for example, I'll just say number six down here, it says no more than 25% of the land shall be located within a floodplain overlay district. That might be something you want to tweak, and it depends on if council feels that, you know, we really want land that is, that is, you know, we're going to be able to do really whatever we need on it. But you could also raise that percentage and say, you know, as a town, we value areas in a floodplain, and we don't want any development on it. We don't mind, you know, taking this land as a recreation area. Just an example, but those are our standards currently. Trying to move on here. Okay, so here's a few strengths of the way, you know, the town currently accepts PIL. So it allows us to gather funds to purchase and invest in central recreational areas. It also allows the town to buy property of interest and not even worry about those design standards and allow the town to, you know, buy property that town staff or council finds desirable, instead of letting the developers of these properties potentially dictate what they want to give the town. So here are some challenges for, you know, the way this is currently handled and other scenarios. So let's say the town received all the PIL that I just discussed in my, in my scenarios. It's probably not going to be immediately used. It's probably going to be pooled, and when a, when the town identifies where we want to put a park, it's going to be used in the future. And, you know, that could be two, three, four, five years, could be maybe longer. So it's not, the impacts might not be immediately felt. My second bullet point is that the PIL is used for, the towns generally use the PIL for more centrally located parks and greenways. So what this means is that some of our residents may have had to drive a car to a park instead of having, you know, a smaller piece of land dedicated right next to their development or within their, their apartment complex. The last bullet point refers to, you know, if the town did start to receive some publicly dedicated land, you know, it would not be as large as, say, Marshall Community Park. It would be, you know, really site-specific to a certain subdivision or multifamily development. And this is just kind of a broad disclaimer that, you know, the town might not have as much control as we do now with the PIL as far as getting that quality land, getting something that's really easily accessible, and things like that. Okay. So here's a few considerations for, you know, potential changes, you know, potentially keeping our policies similar to the way they are now. And I'll just kind of read through them, but, but really long-term costs which could be associated with maintaining these smaller parks that are going to be located near developments. You know, there's no requirement in the statutes that these ever have to be developed, but I would assume at some point, the town may want to program them, would have to provide some kind of maintenance, may have to provide parking. You know, things like that could, could add up compared to some of the larger parks we have now. Second bullet point deals with, you know, the towns, we're getting really close to, you know, building out, we're going to have less PIL coming in compared to what we do now as residential development lessons. You know, just running through the, the last few projects we've had, most of the PIL, the actual money comes from multifamily developments. And so that's something to consider as the town builds out, we're going to have less of these developments coming in. It's a, it's a one-time payment when the, when an apartment complex is built, when a neighborhood is subdivided. So it's not a continual payment we'll get. The last thing is that a payment in lieu really allows developers flexibility in site design that land dedication may not. So if we refer back to those development standards, when a developer is designing a site, they're going to have to meet those standards first of all, and then develop the site around it. So the PIL allows them to kind of build where they'd like and then let the town worry about how we're going to spend the money to develop a park. Okay. And here are my questions, my key questions for council, and I'm going to highlight two of them, oh, three of them, actually. So the first one is the second-to-last bullet point, and I think this is really the key question of my presentation, is, does council want to continue with what I've called our centrally-located parks and continuing to get payment in lieu and investing in our, our parks and recreation that way? Or would council prefer maybe more, what I call individual parks, which are going to be smaller, they're going to be more distributed through town, and much more close to the development, actually going to be within the development that comes? And some other considerations, of course, are, like I mentioned, for multifamily, we can have land dedicated as well as accepting PIL. My next two questions, and this is the second bullet point here. Does council view potential parkland dedication different for single-family subdivisions and multifamily developments? And really what I mean by this is, say, we want to continue just accepting PIL for single-family developments, but for multifamily, we say, you know, multifamily's higher density, town really feels that, you know, those residents should have some kind of space within their development to get out and, you know, throw a ball or something like that. The last question I'll really highlight is, is there a preferred location within town that town council feels is more appropriate for land dedication if they're accepting PIL? Example I'll use for this is along the new McCrimmon corridor. Maybe town council feels that, that that is a particularly good site, it's not developed yet. Maybe the town wants to see smaller parks in that location instead of accepting PIL. So that is really the end of my presentation. I've got a few more questions here that I'd also like, you know, to discuss and have answered. I can run back over the presentation if I need to, and I guess I'd like to hear council's thoughts at this time. Thank you. Let me ask one more question. Is this, are we handling questions? Okay, I see. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Thank you. If you could leave this slide up because I, I want to make sure that I cover all your questions, right? So thank you for that really helpful overview. I have felt that our parks payment in lieu is causing a trend of developers to donate money for the parks payment in lieu versus do land donation. And I, I feel like we need to have closer spaces to the multifamily areas for green space, for relaxation, getting out of the community a little bit, or, you know, it'd be ideal if they would have some space within the community to gather with their neighbors, to have the kids play together, you know, there's just, I'm seeing a trend where we're not getting the green spaces that we had hoped for, that are usable by the residents in multifamily. So that's my theme. And so if I look at your questions specifically, I would like to see more individual parks at this point in time. We do have some nice, larger parks in the town, but it'd be nice to have more, smaller parks that are closer to residents. The next question that you have is view parkland dedication for single-family and multifamily differently? I, I do see that a little differently. I think that dedicating land in a multifamily development would be more helpful. I know that in apartment communities, they do program in clubhouses, pools, recreation areas as part of their overall framework, but when we see multifamily or town homes, that, that doesn't happen always, and we are getting more parks payment in lieu in that situation. So with the single-family homes, we do sometimes see more amenities associated with that, but we're seeing less and less as the newer developments happen. So there might be a trend there, but it seems to be more pronounced, for me at least, in my view of the multifamily. And so preferred location of town, I think it would be really nice if we could preserve some of the McCrimmon Extension areas for a park or some area where there could be some gathering or recreation along that corridor since it's such a nice stretch right now. But I'm not sure how that could all happen, but it would be an ideal location, I think, if we were to look at a, a larger kind of park area in the future. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Robbadi, please.
Could you clarify something for me, Christopher? Is, when there is a, when there's not a payment in lieu, is that a, is that a land dedication where the developer programs or designs what goes on the land and then turns it over to the town? Or is that a donation where the developer gives us the land and we decide what goes on?
If, if they did not pay a payment in lieu, they would dedicate the land as-is, and then the town would take ownership of it.
Okay. So because I think that, I think it's important for people to understand that when you talk about lower-quality land where they can't develop, that might be land in a floodplain, right? Or land that's not suitable for, you know, land that for one reason or another isn't great for buildings, like there's a stream there or something. But what that kind of land could be suitable for is amenities like a dog park or tennis courts. Like the, the one example that you showed, I think it was five or six slides back, where there was that square, and it was 2.63 acres. I mean, that would be plenty of land for a dog park, whether it was in a floodplain or not, you know? So for that reason, I think that we should pursue land dedication more than, more than we should pursue payments in lieu. I think that, you know, I think that we should look to bond funds or other funding instruments for land acquisition and use that money to, to purchase land for parks. I, I don't think that I see dedication for single-family or multifamily developments differently. I think that, and also, I don't think that it's, I mean, maybe this is me speaking from a place of privilege, I hope not, but I don't think that it's, especially with all the sidewalk and greenway improvements that we're doing, I don't think that it's, it's that, I don't think anyone is so far away from a park that it's, that it represents a huge inconvenience to drive there or even walk there or bike there. So my answer to the second question is no. I don't think I have preferred locations. I mean, I guess I would really love to get some land on this side of town, but yeah, I guess, I guess I do have a preferred location. I'd like to get some more land on this side of town, especially, you know, if there was something large enough that we could use for a dog park or disc golf or some tennis courts, you know, with a dog park or disc golf because we don't have to disturb the tree line being my pet projects. And yeah, I think that individually, individual parks, individual amenities, I think it's nice to have, to have small parks, you know, scattered around the place. I mean, I also think we need some more big parks, but I think that where we can get land to do not just parks but also amenities, I think that, you know, I think that that's good for the town. You know, we're growing so fast, I think that, or we have grown so fast over the past several years that, you know, I think that we're lagging behind a little bit in park space, and, you know, I think that wherever we can put one, we should try to do that. So that's what I have. Thank you so much. Great presentation, by the way. I especially, I especially appreciate it, just so you know, just visually, like that, those slides where you had what the developer would have donated versus what they, you know, the money that they paid, that's, that kind of stuff is really helpful to me. So just, you know, for future reference, but I, I did think that your whole presentation was very informative. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So you, Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question and then a comment, and you may not have the answer to the question, but I'm hoping someone on the call does. My first question is, what is our history of using that PIL?
I do not have that answer. Looking for anybody else, staff-wise.
And this is Michelle. I'll chime in for a second, and then if she needs on the call, she may have more information. I do know at least a large portion of the money has been used in the past for greenway development. Don't know if there are any other large, significant projects, but Crabtree Hatcher Greenway, a lot of the funds went towards that.
Okay. Yeah, so the staff can't actually demonstrate really what projects we have applied parkland payment in lieu for. They would be mostly your capital projects or small land purchases, like one that is potentially coming forward in the near future that is associated with an existing park. So there, there is a reconciliation of that. We do actively utilize it and turn it over, but we do also collect for, as Chris has indicated, a large part of it's coming from multifamily. But if, if council's interested in some kind of listing of how we've used it in the past, I can certainly get finance department to work on that for you.
I, I don't think that's necessary. I'm pretty clear. I was just curious as to, as to the history, but I'm pretty clear on, you know, where I stand in regards to answering these questions. So like, I am for having the individual parks versus the centrally-located for much of the same reasons as Councilmember Robbadi and Scruggins-Johnson have said. I think at this point, with so few parcels left to be developed or acquired within our town, that this is the way that we're going to need to move forward to preserve our green space within the town limits. And so I think that individual parks is a priority for me as opposed to getting that payment in lieu all the time. Kind of feels like we're being bought off from them cutting down all our trees. Should land dedication be required? I think so, and I, with the multifamily, and I would like to see the combination of the PIL and land dedication for the apartment. And I guess this was a question I had too, is that for the multifamily, it has to be a combination? It cannot be all land dedication?
So let me flip back to that slide, if that's all right, and I might have town attorney step in also. So this is our, so, so to back it up, like I said, so generally, this land dedication is required for subdivisions, and that's, that's across the state. Almost every municipality has that authority. That's, that's a standard subdivision authority. Per this local legislation, which I got on your screen here, both Cary and Morrisville were granted the authority to require partial payment in lieu or partial dedication of land. You know, I reached out to town of Cary staff, they only ever take PIL. They said they, the person I spoke with said they haven't had it, land dedicated for a multifamily that he was aware of. You know, when I spoke with the town attorney about this, he agreed that the, the sentence at the very bottom allows only a partial dedication of land, that it seems like, in town attorney, let me put words in your mouth if you want to chime in, it, it seems like this was written to really require PIL more than actual land dedication. And the 50% number, the 50% split was just an idea I think we had just to show you, you know, how it could be implemented. That 50% split is not set, it's, you know, that could be more of a policy decision by council. council, but, but yes. Town attorney, would you like to comment right now?
Sure. I think that's accurate, Chris, and Councilmember Fender. So the screen language there, first two or three lines, developer, it's not subject to the subdivision ordinance, so that would be your typical apartment complex, shall provide funds to the town. So the starting point is PIL. And then, as Chris points to the second, the last sentence rather, it does say, our ordinance may allow a combination of the two. So for the multifamily PIL, it starts off with the payment as the priority, first priority, and then a combination is allowed as a second priority. But not a full-on dedication. So in the multifamily situation, we could not require 100% dedication. If that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Yeah. So going back to your questions, should land dedication be required? Yes. And it would have to be a combination for the multifamily, and I think it should be weighted more heavily on the land dedication to get, to have some benefit to the residents of that multifamily subdivision and benefit for the town. I don't necessarily view parkland dedication differently for single-family versus multifamily. Preferred location, I mean, I think it should be done across the board. I, I do see the benefit for requiring it for the multifamily development along McCrimmon Extension. I think that is the way that we would get more green space along that corridor. Design standards, I'm not sure. I guess I'd, I'd want further information on that. And then, yes, I prefer the, I think we, we have some centrally located parks already. We've got projects in the pipeline to expand those parks, and, you know, we have the Crabtree Creek Nature Park project, so I, I do think we need to add some more smaller individual parks across our town. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. I think Mayor Colley.
Thank you, Chris. Great presentation. Quick question, you mentioned the formulas for the fees earlier. Is there any flexibility in those? Because when you do the math, the fact that the developer essentially getting three acres for $285,000, we can't get that kind of deal on land anywhere. So if the formulas were fixed, and we could actually buy land for what it's worth to get an equitable amount of land, I'd maybe think PIL is okay because it's a lot more flexible, but right now the PIL just isn't enough. So can you expound on whether or not we can change those formulas a little bit, or are they set in stone?
I can do my best, and I would welcome our planning director once I try to explain. So let me start with this top formula here. It is 1/35th of an acre multiplied by the number of dwelling units. To be quite honest, I, I cannot tell where the 1/35th has come from. It seems to be standard across every municipality that I researched. I could not find it anywhere as identified in the general statutes. Not sure if that's, you know, a, a general practice of standard established for parkland dedication. So I, I'm not sure how that could be adjusted. To multifamily, I can say this formula here, again, the 1/35th, I have the same answer for that, multiplied by the number of dwelling units times .8. Again, I wasn't sure where the .8 came from. That's specific to the town's UDO. I actually contacted former planning director Ben Hitchings, and he said the .8 was based off of survey, census data, which indicated that multifamily is generally closer to occupied at around 80%. That was his answer. Again, that's, that's not from current staff. So that is my answer. As far as adjusting it, Director Stiegel, would you like to, do you have a better answer than I just provided?
Yeah, I think Chris did a great job answering. I would be very hesitant to adjust the 1/35th because that is common across the board statewide. That does seem to be, whether it's legally required or not, definitely, you know, the commonly accepted number. The .8, if you wanted us to look into that further, if you wanted us to look at more current census data when it comes out, we could do that in research, but the 1/35th, I would recommend keeping as is.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good clarification on the acreage side. Looking at that .8, I think would be a good step for us, because I believe that most of our apartments in the area are 90% occupied or more, and I expect them to continue to be so, or even more so in the future. I guess my, the essence of my question is, how can we make sure we get enough PIL, the dollar amount, to actually buy that much land? Because what I'm seeing from your examples is it's essentially $100,000 an acre is what we're getting compared to what they're contributing in PIL. So if that number was more what the market is actually asking for the land, then PIL, given its flexibility, would be nicer to have. But the fact is that the land is so inexpensive, I'd rather they dedicate it, in which case I'd want to dig in a little bit more on the design standards and make sure that it's actually useful. I'd bring the floodplain and make sure that it's 100% usable land for our uses. Floodplains and buffers, that's gonna make, that's gonna be their challenge. I'd also want to know whether or not it actually has to be onsite, or it could be off-site dedication. PIL is essentially funding that's off-site. Can we also get land that's off-site? If we indicate which parcels would be amenable, or things that we're looking towards, then that could be anywhere. That would give some flexibility and give the developers some flexibility also. I know there's such off-site dedications for tree preservation and things like that. Could we also expand that? My main goal here is to make sure that we're getting what we need to make a difference for the town, because right now the present system doesn't seem to be getting us the land that we need. So I think focusing on actually obtaining land, which is becoming more expensive, is my goal. Whether or not it should be nearby other places, I think a good goal is to have a 10-minute walk to a park. So if we could do a map out and try to figure out where we're, we have gaps where people can't walk from 10 minutes to a park, that would be nice. I think to have a nice, good-sized park in the McCrimmon area would be nice for the people who are gonna be working there, and it's gonna be right along that nice sidewalk as well. So I guess if I could get clarity on whether or not it has to be proximate to the site for the dedication?
I can somewhat answer your question now, but the statutes require that they be, sorry, I'm reading from my book here, that they, that the park be, if PIL is used, it has to be in the immediate area of the development. Now, the immediate area is not defined. It's, that's, that's more of a gray area. I'd say that while Mooresville is, is not as large as a town of Cary or Raleigh, I think, you know, the town would, would really want to, you know, define an immediate area and stay within an immediate area if the parkland, parkland PIL is used. As far as seeing if they can, a developer can dedicate land somewhere else, I'd have to look into that and really research, you know, the legality of it. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I would just point to, you know, a developer's gonna acquire a piece of land, and from that land they're gonna dedicate. I think it might be a little tricky if we somehow ask them to dedicate land somewhere else in town. That would be a few more transactions involved. I'm not saying it can't happen, but again, that's something else I would really need to dive into, unless other staff tonight have a, a better answer to that.
Because I think that would be a good wrinkle. It would help us to get some of that other land at a price that's reasonable. Right now, the PIL doesn't let us buy land elsewhere, because it's just not enough money. So if staff could look into that, that would be very helpful. That's all that I had for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finished my notes here. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Ral.
Um, yeah, I was just curious as to, if there's, you know, data out there that would show the amount of payment in lieu that's coming from the multifamily versus the single-family? Maybe you already had that in the slides, just as we look at the developments we've approved since we were allowed the PIL for the multifamily. Maybe, you know, we have an open data portal now. That might be a nice kind of dataset to provide so that the public can, you know, as they're involved with our land use planning, can sort of see, because I like parkland dedication, but the nice thing about the payment in lieu is that it's cash in the bank that you have that we can dip into, you know, and it builds up over time. So that, that'd be something nice if we could figure out where to find those kind of numbers.
Yeah, Councilmember Ral, we could pull that together and provide that to council.
Okay. Because I'd like that shared with the public as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, Chris, circling back to what TJ was saying, right? The 1/35th, how are we determining the cost of the acreage? Is there a formula for that? Because the cost of land is higher, and it keeps changing, right? You know, at one point it was 200. We ourselves are almost buying it four and a half, you know, 4.5, like $450,000 an acre. So how can that be a variable attached to this formula somewhere? Because that, that is pretty much a different way to put what TJ was looking for.
So for just a standard subdivision, the general statutes say that the town has to use the tax assessed value. So in practice, what that means to staff is when someone submits a subdivision and wants to do a PIL, we request the Wake County tax information, or if it's in Durham, the Durham County tax information, and we use whatever the, the value is assessed by the tax office. So I guess Wake County just reevaluated, so a lot of the properties we were working on went up, you know, during that process, but that, that's how we determine that number.
Yeah, I get it, but that's every four years though, right? You know, and, and that's, how do we keep up with the rising costs, especially in Morris? So somewhere else in Wake County might be different than what we are at the heart of the triangle here. So I don't know, like, Michelle or Frank can look into it, but I think getting a fair share to what the present value is, not trying to, you know, in any form or shape, you know, say, you know, we as a town, you know, what we can do so that we get our fair share, that's all.
Yeah, and Councilmember Garamella, I'll let Attorney Gray chime in if he would like, but per state law, we do need to use the assessed value. We don't have discretion to use market rate.
That's correct. Our hands are tied on that, Councilmember Garamella.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then the other question was asked, right? Like, I remember, where these parks were, you know, money has been used. I know for sure the part of the, you know, money, like, was used for Marshall Community Park, because I remember when we were working with Northwest Park, all the PIL, they said from Breckenridge, went to make Marshall Community Park. And then the, the money for Northwest Park came from the PIL. The extension, the land that we bought, I think, for the TTA property was the PIL, and also a lot of the areas, the development for, you know, the design for the nature, the, what is it, Crabtree Nature Park was the PIL too. So it has been used pretty good, and I think it has been working the way it is. Obviously, parks are expensive, small PILs, you know, have to be, dip into a bigger bucket to get a bigger project. So, thanks, that's all from me.
Thank you. And actually, if I could clarify further on the assessed value, council will hear some text amendments that I'm moving forward at your first meeting in April, and one of the text amendments actually clarifies, you know, per, per state law that we have to use as assessed value. So I just thought I'd add, just, we'll see that next month.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Chris. And just to add on with what Councilman Garamella just said, he rattled off a lot of really important projects. The money has been used for purchase of parkland as well as the development of parkland. And so, like I said, he rattled off there a couple of really key projects, but the Cedarport Community Center and the gym, that was, you know, that was, that came from PIL years ago too. So it'd be interesting to see how that breaks down over the last couple of years. But anyhow, not to repeat, a lot of really good, important comments have been made in the last 45 minutes or so, but I, I got a question and then I have some comments, Chris. So I, I get that we have these standards that staff uses for the dedication of land. Is, is, is it the developer then that actually identifies the land to donate based on those standards? I mean, what, 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 how much weight does staff have in determining what property we want dedicated?
So these would be standards, just like other standards in UDO, we'd go, you know, staff would review it and make sure it complies with the standards. We, we would need to set up some form of these standards being just very black and white, can we, can we say yes as staff that comply or not? As far as when a developer first comes to us in a pre-submitting meeting or something like that, we can say, hey, you know, this really seems, this little area really seems to match with what the town's looking for. But we would not be able to, as staff, you know, subjectively say, no, you have to give us this specific piece of land. And that's why those design standards are so critical. And in my research and just more informal phone calls with other planners around the triangle and, and other ones that I know, that's a big reason why most municipalities go with the PIL. It allows staff members to identify land that the town they work for really wants and go after that land, rather than really trying to set up these, you know, like I said, black and white design standards that may or may not fit for each individual parcel that's being developed. But yeah, so they would need to be objective and not, and me as staff would not have the authority to say, you know, developer, you have to give us this specific piece because the town wants it. They, they might do that, and we could certainly ask, but we, we don't have the authority to do that.
Okay. Thank you. That's unfortunately how I thought it works, so that's why the, the standards are important and maybe need to be beefed up if we're gonna look at more land dedication moving forward. I guess the other, the other thing that's a little bit concerning to me is the, you know, we need to probably have a medium size of land that we'll accept as dedication too. You know, to, to have, pocket parks are really important, but a bunch of pocket parks across the town, instead of a larger parcel of land that we can use for meeting needs of our master plan, I'm not sure I fall on a lot of mini pocket parks. I think I fall on the side of, let's try to gather, however we do it, gather the land for a larger park to use for our objectives in our master plan. So, and, you know, because we've heard that a couple of people- So, um, and, you know, because we've heard, a couple of people have said this, a park, a substantial park over in the McCrimmon subarea, I think is desirable. I think that would be a great place to focus, um, when we talk about where, preferred locations for land dedication. And then, um, I guess the last thing, um, I really would like the Parks and Rec Department to kind of weigh in and give us some, um, advice and give us their opinion on how, what we're talking about here and this policy, how that fits in with the goals of accomplishing the goals in our master, our Parks and Rec's master plan. I, I, that is going to be really important to me to understand what the preference is from that department. And, um, and I'm just going to throw them out. The last thing, thank you for explaining the point eight zero. I wasn't sure, even when I read that, that slide and that line, I wasn't sure. Why are we multiplying by point eight? So, um, I appreciate the explanation there. And I think that's all, I didn't answer probably all your questions there, but, um, I don't know, let me know what else you need from me. But I think we have good conversations so far tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, that was some good stuff to think about. I think the minimum size is something I missed in my PowerPoint, but I meant to add, so. Uh, let's see. I think, um, Councilmember Robody, you have comment too.
This is actually more of a question, but if, uh, if a developer donates green space, even if it is part of a, um, of a required parkland dedication, are they still eligible for, uh, county and state programs, uh, tax incentives that they would get for donating, um, for donating green space or, or, um, or land?
That, that question is beyond my knowledge. I don't know if other staff here are aware of that, but I, I'm not sure, um, to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing other staff. Okay, thank you.
This is, this is Frank. I think, if I'm understanding your question correctly, uh, council member, if a developer donated, you know, two acres of land to the town and as part of the, uh, parkland dedication requirement from a subdivision, they could take a deduction, a tax deduction for the value of that gift.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Let's see, who's next? I think, uh, Councilmember Fender, you have comment too.
Yeah, I have two comments. One, um, you know, as far as the design standards for, um, the public recreation area for the developers, for me, if it, I do agree that there needs to be some design standards, but if some of the land that they choose to dedicate happens to be part of the wetland, a wetland area, I see that as a positive, um, not necessarily a bad thing. You know, granted, we would want some of the land to be able to be used, whether it's a dog park, um, or just a walking park. If part of it does happen to be a wetland area, I don't, I think that's good to save that area rather than filling it in with dirt. Um, my second comment was, I was just wondering, it seemed like a couple of the council members didn't answer your questions at all. So did you get enough to really, did you get enough direction from us to be able to move forward?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it, in, in what I heard, I think I've got some follow-up that I need to do and that might help us narrow it down. Say with my, with my tree presentation, I did retreat. I think we got a lot of, a lot more specifics that I can come present, some text amendments. For this one, it sounds like I might need to do some research and come back to council before we, we lock down in a certain direction. Though overall, I'd say that I'm hearing, um, a larger park in McCrimmon, and then it seems like a few council members would like smaller parks around town. But I think there's a lot of questions what I'm hearing on. Can we adjust the PIL? What has the PIL in the past been spent on? And a few other data points like that. So yes and no, I think is my answer. I think another session might be helpful, but that's dependent on what council would like me to do.
And if I could weigh in as well, I think, you know, with this one in particular, with, with the tree discussion that you had at retreat as well, you know, these are amendments that are going to have a big impact on the development community. And so stakeholder input on these is going to be important as well. So I think with the trees, we got some great direction. Echo what Chris just said about this item, but, um, might want to come back to you after we have some stakeholder feedback as well to kind of narrow scope down before we finalize amendments.
Yeah, I'd like a chance to do sort of how, um, Broad West handled the land use plan, got a lot of stakeholder comment, because I'd say with our trees, we already have tree standards and we're, we might expand them and, or adjust them. With parkland dedication, I've not involved, been involved with a project that actually dedicates parkland. So I think there's a lot of research I'd like to do prior to getting more specific text amendments if, if they're required, if they're needed. So I have no other comments in the text or in the meeting chat box.
Okay.
So if there are none, okay, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson. Uh, good, we look forward to hearing what our next steps will be after you do some research and you bring that back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to Michelle and Frank for weighing in as necessary as well. At this point, we're going to move on to 4B. Jeanne Hooks, Director of Management Services, will facilitate our next two discussion items. Ms. Hooks?
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to hear you and see you on the screen again. So I'm going to spend a little time with you tonight, talking first about, um, special revenue topics, and then we'll go into bond referendum and a quick follow-up on the debt capacity discussion we just had at our last meeting. So I'll ask mayor if we can hold all the questions and comments to the end of each presentation and then I'll facilitate in the chat any Q and A or comments at that time. I'll, I'll handle that for you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on. We're going to talk about, um, specific programs or topics would be solid waste, funding model options. We're going to touch on street payment and lieu reserve, um, creating a policy, and then we'll, um, update you where we are on the stormwater fee assessment. So let's dive into the stormwater waste program. I do want to just clarify, you know, with the solid waste program, we are, we're talking about in this case from the perspective of a funding model, not from the perspective of what are the service elements in, in the program's components. So I just want to make sure we, we sort of delineate that we're talking about, how do we pay for a service? You know, the, once you have a service, you can define what the elements are at another conversation. But we have a service, we have a program and it's currently, um, supported through your tax rate or absorbed through your tax rate. So let's go over really the program overview. I'll give you some peer comparisons. And then I want to talk to you really about alternative funding models that we think, think it's important. We've, we've had this conversation before in years past for, for those that have been around a while. We keep kind of coming back to this. And then we need to really talk about some critical discussion points from council. It does take a while if you do shift funding model. It takes a while to implement that. And that's why we're having the conversation now in the event if we do want to move or shift. So we have, uh, this next fiscal year to, um, process and prepare for that implementation. So my discussion outcome goal for this evening is really to try to find a consensus of council of whether you want to proceed with the development of a user fee-based model and that it's not absorbed in the tax rate. We'll talk about reasonings, why, pros and cons of the funding model solution as I go. So let me give you just a brief overview of the program itself. I won't go through each one of these items. You've, you've had the presentation for a while, but this gives you a flavor for really what the, um, program is about, what the components are, as we compare them. This really shows you the breakdown of the cost for the different components of the services we offer within the total program. And the total program costs us about 1.3 million. And that's about 2.2 cents on the tax rate. That's, that's what the tax rate is, uh, is paying for. It's absorbing, um, using that source of funding. So let me move on. So if we were to break down and try to compare our program with our peer program, we sort of have to convert, do a conversion and get to this monthly rate because most of our peers, all except one, actually have a user fee-based service program for solid waste. So they charge a monthly fee and have a billing system. So if we took Morrisville's 1.3 million and the number of households that we service currently, and we broke that down into this monthly cost, we're about $17.31, I believe is what it equates to. So as we compare and try to understand what, what that monthly cost might look like for our service to our peers, that, that's how we have to establish what, what would it be if we were to fully 100% recover that cost through, through a fee service. So here you see some peer comparisons and you'll notice that the only other person remaining that is absorbing through the tax rate is actually Garner. There used to be three of us and we're now two. The, uh, the town of Wake Forest in this fiscal year actually shifted back to a user fee-based model. They did that because they felt that when they compared their customer costs for municipal services, they found that, that they were out of comparison to their peers in what a household pays for the same type of services. And meaning, they thought that, that their town was getting a really great deal and that the tax rate was absorbing the, this particular service. But what was happening is it was, they viewed it as inequitable. Wake Forest said that their commercial taxpayers were actually subsidizing for a service that's only being provided to residents. So that was the compelling reason. And in years past, we've, we've gotten, as I alluded or mentioned, that we've had this conversation before. We've kind of been at this place and talked about this subsidy coming from your commercial, um, citizens, that they are not receiving the same level of service as your residents are in solid waste. But the tax rate is coming from everyone and pays for a service that's provided to just residents. So that was part of Wake Forest reasons for shifting this fiscal year. And they've, they've managed to do it from what the Finance Director reports pretty successfully. I, I will say in the comparison, if you are to look at the service elements, generally they're very similar. There are some nuances and a lot of, um, where we see the nuances are going to be whether they are, um, a weekly service or a bi-weekly service for yard waste. And then there's some nuances that might be in the loose leaf collection. But largely, in part when we do the comparison, they're generally, they have the basic, same basic elements that we have. So let's talk a little bit about the alternative funding model. There's, there's really three strategies to consider that we've talked about in the past. Current strategy is obviously to continue to absorb it in the tax rate. I will tell you, we don't have a formal dedication of our tax rate dedicated to solid waste. It's an informal assumption and that's where it's coming from. That's what it's paid, paid for. 2.2, the equivalent of 2.2 cents is what is being used to fund this program. But it is not formally dedicated in any way. So what does that mean? It means there's potential competition for other needs that the tax rate is meant to cover. The other one we'll talk about is user fee-based. So that is the one that staff's probably looking for that is most comparable across, across, and to our peers. And then the other one is this, uh, service transfer. That is, we would no longer be in the solid waste business. That another entity would take it over for us. So let me go and just dive into a breakdown of really benefits and challenges of each as we analyze this, this particular type of funding. So in absorbing in the current tax rate, or in the tax rate, again, 2.2 cents is the equivalent, but not a formal dedication. Some benefits here that I'll highlight, I'm not going to read everything here, but it does spread the cost out over all taxpayers, users and non-users. So it can be seen as a benefit. I think we have seen it that way in some years past. Another one that I think is important to highlight is that we do get, get through it, being a part of the, the tax rate component. It's the high collection rate for our taxes through Wake County. We are quite superior. It's 99.8% in our collection rate for our taxes. So, so that is, in and of itself, is a benefit. Some, some challenges, conversely, while we might see the spreading of the cost out through all taxes, taxpayers, users and non-users, conversely, um, some taxpayers are paying for a service they simply don't receive. And that is your apartments and your commercial developments. And remember, Morrisville is about 50/50. If not, actually, it's more, potentially shifted more towards commercial and a little less on your tax-based component for residential. So we are sort of shifting, um, the line or the bar of who our, our tax-based components are made up of. Most of it is apartments and commercials. The other one is that, um, there's no official dedication of the tax rate, and I mentioned that. And that's because it kind of connects to really this statement of growing inflationary pressure on the tax rate. So we're not, we don't have a mechanism to, or effectively analyze what is the true cost of this service? How do we recover the cost for this service? We don't have that effective means because it's being absorbed informally through your tax rate. So your tax rate, if we're not adjusting it year over year and our operations in this big service, as well as other services that the tax rate's meant to support, keep growing and we don't adjust our tax rate, then it can put pressure on, on the future rate of what's going to be necessary to cover the, all operations really, because you have these big programs running and expecting, um, the tax rate to support that. And then the other is, and I just sort of alluded to that, is it's difficult to determine that true cost recovery through this particular model. So a user fee-based model, per assembly, is, it sets the user fee annually with the budget. So you have the control each year, even though you have the same control of the tax rate, it, it is almost as an enterprise service where you look at how much the cost is. That's both direct and indirect cost for this particular service. And you have set and establish a fee to recover based on what your goals are. Typically, it's 100% cost recovery. The town council could choose to subsidize it, meaning that the fee will recover a portion of it and the tax rate or would cover the rest of it. Most of the models that I see for the peer communities, it's 100% cost recovery. So some benefits that I would highlight here is it, it does allow you an opportunity because you have the fee authority to charge for this service to that, that select group, residents, who are actually benefiting from the service, directly benefiting from the service. who are actually benefiting from the service, directly benefiting from the service. It allows you to actually redirect potentially that 2.2 cents to something else that's needed. And I would say a big one here would be either other operational needs. More importantly, I think capital investments is what you could potentially look at. It also creates a very transparent service cost. People know what service they're getting, and they know what they're paying for, for that service. And it's, the cost recovery is very, very directly correlated to the demand and the growth, and I think that's really an important factor to consider as well. We're growing and expanding with this service, and if the tax rate's not adjusting to absorb that, it means something else has to give. Either our natural growth in revenues has to cover it, and all the other things that are inflating in our operations, or you have to make an adjustment potentially in your tax rate for an operational item. And it also, more importantly, it creates a more equitable service. It means that it eliminates that non-user taxpayer program subsidy, that that portion of your community, your citizenry that is your commercial development, is now, would no longer be subsidizing a service that they are not receiving in the same way as the other portion of your community, which is what's now. The challenge here, it does require a billing and collection process. And I think the more bigger challenge is, is it is, there are transitional perceptions that you have to work with. And that's why we are in close contact with Wake Forest to see how they're moving through that process this year and how successful they are with it. So far, so good. So let me go to the last one, and that's that service transfer model. So again, simply put, we would no longer have the cost impact once the service was transferred to another entity. Another entity could be another jurisdiction actually absorbs our customers and provides a service to our citizens. And the benefit here is it really, it may provide the potential for economies of scale for really being a part of a larger customer base. And I'd say that's kind of compared to really our water and sewer transition. We did that specifically to try to manage and bring that cost of that service down. I think the large detractor here is that we would lose our span of control. This is not a model that the town staff would recommend, but it is, in all fairness, one that I think I needed to put on the table for you. But we would lose our span of control over the customer. They would be confusing. I think there's a town identity impact that we would need to deal with. And I do want to just highlight, we are actually in a current contract to provide this service, so we would have to look and evaluate the terms. But again, not one the staff recommends, but in all fairness, needed to put it out there on the table for you. Other things to consider, and this is what we sort of alluded to while we're here, is that a transition, if we were to do this, move from one funding model solution to another, it actually takes a year to try to plan and implement that. Why is that the case? Because we would be having to work and establish and set up with partners potentially to do billing services or to evaluate how we would actually provide that type of service, that function for billing and collection, and how it does give us a benefit and an opportunity here. We actually have some smaller billing needs that are going on, and they're sort of decentralized in our organization. So we have alarms, we have stormwater, and then we have fire inspections. And it does allow us, if we had a larger billing option through a bigger service like solid waste, it does allow us to sort of centralize and pull in these smaller, smaller types of billing items that are either being handled manually with our existing staff, or they're being farmed out and we're paying a service to a third-party vendor, or we're paying Wake County to include it on the tax bill. So it does allow us to sort of create maybe a more efficient process, to create some ownership, that those are our customers, and not just provide this one billing service, but really address other billing service needs that we may have already in existence. There are plenty of viable options to consider if it were to become a user fee based and we were to bill it and bring it internally, or outsource it even for billing. There are viable options we've already explored that we could navigate that. It just takes time to put those, that framework in place. And then, of course, obviously, with any transition like that, like this, when you would potentially pose a shift that would change what a customer sees or how they're paying for it, it would require some robust communication to educate and develop that level of understanding. Now, make no mistake, citizen residents do pay for the service. They pay it for it through their tax rate. The shift in the model going to a user fee based, it would just shift it to a fee and a billing process, either monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly, however the town chose to do that. Mostly, everybody has designed it monthly. And you could choose to redirect that tax rate to something else, but there are another expanded program or capital investment. So with that, that's about all I wanted to share with you, and I wanted to open the floor for some critical discussion points. Because it takes a year to navigate and to implement and put a framework together, staff does need to know if council is interested in moving forward with that so we could potentially start planning. So the first question is, which funding model aligns best to really counsel strategic interest? If it is the tax rate model, then we need to hear that. If you're open to the opportunity of a user fee based model, then we need to know that, and we can have more discussion on that, of what that could look like, how we could, could we structure it? And we can make that a part of our next fiscal year's work plan to get things in place and it be implemented with this school year 2023. Or if you really want to do the service transfer, which staff is not recommending. And then the other one is what other information really does council need from staff to consider? So I'll pause there, and I will go and see who is on our list. Steve Rao, you had, Councilmember Rao, you had a question first? You might be muted. Councilmember Rao?
This has been, yeah, I just, you hear me?
You're cutting in and out.
I don't know. Hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, there's a echo. No, I think, you know, I think that it's just concerns me that we would be shifting the burden from the, away from the businesses, but then getting the citizens to bear the benefit, bear, you know, the fee. But at the same time, we would be basically freeing up or reducing our operating budget for the trash fee. So that's where I'm sort of torn. I have to think through. You know, I've always thought in the past, you know, we have different options, right? I mean, we could not, you know, let's say we did this, we could not automatically reduce the tax rate by that 2 cents. We could keep a cent in there for more capacity. The other thing we've seen in the past, Waste Zero is a company that came in and talked about pay as you throw a variable rate. So the more you recycle, the less of a fee you pay. And those kind of models around the country have actually significantly reduced the funding from the budget that goes into waste and recycling. Now, I don't know whether that's an option that we could kick back to the Morrisville Recycling Environmental Committee, but those are just some thoughts for the council. Because part of me thinks like it's inevitable this is going to happen anyway, that people have been so used to doing it this way. And it's just, I don't know. I mean, I just, I'm sort of torn on this one. So that's all I have to say. I just wanted to hear what my colleagues had to say too.
Okay. Mayor Colley, you have a question and a comment?
Yes, please. Great presentation. Do we know the, how Wake Forest is commercial versus residential? Like you're indicating, we are essentially 45% residential now and 55% commercial. Do we have any insight as to whether they're more of a bedroom community?
So they're more than likely, the last time I looked, they're more residential. But I can, in my budget preview, I actually have that information coming forward. I want to be able to show council annually where your municipal customer service cost is falling and how it compares with your peers, and that is a part of that presentation that's coming. And I can include in that the, what other jurisdictions' tax base components are. It's actually information that Wake County publishes on their website as well.
Okay. So I'm, I know you're looking for direction from the council tonight on consensus. I think this is an important issue to let the residents also weigh in on, because it has been a couple of years. So I want to make sure that all our council members are hearing from the residents about how this would work. I hear people talking about how we could build capacity by switching to a fee based. I don't really see that logic. I see the $1.3 million having to come from somewhere, and right now, half of it is coming from the commercial because it's embedded in the tax rate. If we remove that, that means the $1.3 million is coming straight from the residents. So it's not like there's more capacity or anyone's paying less. It's just we're giving up more than half a million dollars from the commercial sector, who, when they chose Morrisville, they agreed to this. They agreed that this would be part of their contribution to the town, being part of our community. We had an applicant talking about how they were a part of the community. This is one way that the businesses are actually supporting the community and not really getting anything in return, except for the fact that it's a better community. So I just wanted to point out that fact, that I think that's very important. We lost the privilege license fee a while back. That was $800,000 a year. That would have put us in a different place right now, frankly. We would be a different town if we had that money. So I think that the commercial sector is getting a good deal already. Morrisville is a great place to do business, and I think will continue to be so. So I want to hear more from my council members, but I think that if we do a formal dedication of the tax rate, that's essentially the same thing. Essentially, if we just make a user fee, that's $1.3 million coming from the residents. But if we dedicate 2.2 cents from the tax rate after we do all the other budget stuff, that's the same thing, but essentially, we're getting a better deal for our residents and we're building our capacity. So I know that's a little bit outside the box and not how staff is presenting this item, but essentially, if we want more operational capacity, a formal dedication of the tax rate is the way to go. And I hope that my fellow council members will consider that. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, here. Oh, Brandon put a comment in there. We'll hear more about recycling from Kimberly Conlee, our sustainability, in our next month presentation. Councilmember Fender, you have a question?
I thought someone else was before me. I think Councilmember Robati.
Oh, yes, thank you. Councilmember Robati.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I don't think that this is a good time to be shifting this burden strictly to the residential taxpayers. I, you know, I just keep going back to the fact that people have lost their jobs, you know, we're just starting to climb out of the pandemic. I think that this is a valuable discussion. I think that we should for sure have it next year. I don't think that this is the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender?
So I just had a question. Do we know, like, given that we do, we are heavier on the commercial side than residential and also in comparison to the municipalities, do we know what our user fee would need to be to cover the cost? I'm wondering if it would need, whether we would even be able to have that user fee at, you know, around the $20 that the other municipalities have, or would it need to be much higher?
So that's a good question. Morrisville, when we calculate really 100% recovery of the cost, the 1.3 million, and we break it down to a monthly rate, it falls actually in the lower end of your peer comparison community. So it's at about, just above $17 per month to fully recover the cost to provide that service to our residents, based on the current number of households that we have in our program and how much that costs. Now, you know, that's something that every budget year you have to assess. And I think with, going back to what the mayor said, the formal dedication, if you did a formal dedication, it would then be a requirement of council to really assess this program and what that cost recovery factor is that's dedicated formally from your tax rate and adjust it accordingly if you still wanted 100% cost recovery. So a formal dedication, you would need to have some parameters spelled out to make sure that you still are achieving the same thing that a, that a user fee is meant to do. It's to recover the cost to provide the service to the people that are using it. And Morrisville would fall, if you look at this particular comparison, really in the lower section, I think, you play that $14, but they also have an additional charge per cart. Nidel's about $16.55, and the others are more around that $20.
So how are we able, how are we able to get away with that when currently our, it's being subsidized now by our commercial resident? I mean, is it that our cost is so much lower than our municipalities, the other municipalities?
It could be a combination of factors. I believe Martha is typing something into the chat. It's really a combination of factors. It is the number of households that we are operating on could be different as compared to our peer community. So as the mayor indicated, Wake Forest is potentially more residential, and you have a bigger space to create that fee off of, and whereas Morrisville has more commercial versus residential. I'm going to pause there and see if Martha wants to jump in.
I'll try. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Just another comment, I think, related to how some of the other communities set their rate, is they may also incorporate the cost of billing and collection. So that is likely a component of their rate versus just the cost.
Thank you, Martha. I think we lost you at the end, but I think we got the gist of what you were saying, that there are some other factors that they could be incorporating in there.
Okay. So given that, you know, you guys are calculating the rate to be around $17, I would be in favor of going to the user fee and then allowing for a bit more flexibility in our tax rate and have those funds possibly go into capital improvement.
Thank you. And just to kind of put a disclaimer, the $17.31, just in a comparison at this point. Obviously, if we went down this path, we would do our full study and make sure that we set the right appropriately. But we But we, we considered the same factors that I considered in this quick comparison for a monthly rate. Um, Councilmember Fender. Councilmember Scoggins Johnson, you had a comment?
Yes. Um, thank you, Jeannie. Um, when looking at the peer comparisons with other municipalities, it seems like it's now finally time to charge a user fee in order to be flexible in the future. I know that we have a ten-year contract with our current, uh, waste, um, management company, but it's not going to be too long in the future when we have to renegotiate. If we explore and establish a user fee separately, when that contract negotiation comes around, we will be able to very clearly identify impact and, and, and change over time. Right now, it's invisible to our residents, um, how waste gets, um, funded. The businesses do supplement the residential cost because businesses have to pay their own waste fees and contract privately. So that is how that subsidy works today. So if we can, like, in the first year, set a, a fee to not exceed maybe twenty dollars a month, that might be a way we graduate the fee, um, over time, to kind of set a, a cap or a maximum and maybe a scale associated with it. And the other, um, options, I know we explored in the past, was having the fee associated with maybe a water bill that CARRY provides and, and coordinating with the town to carry on that, or of course, um, coordinating the fee with the annual property tax payment and having another line item, like our stormwater fee, might be an annual fee-based kind of billing cycle that would lower costs for implementation. But, um, again, just to summarize, I'm, um, in support of exploring this, to see, um, what options we do have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Garamelli has comments?
Yeah. Uh, I think we need to, you know, step back and see why we are doing it. Um, this, we have been doing in Morrisville free because it gets absorbed with the tax. Many towns are having a very, very hard time even managing their solid waste and recycling, especially some towns in Michigan and others, they have stopped, you know, recycling, because it's just the sheer cost of, uh, sending it, because China and other countries have stopped taking any of, uh, the recyclable items. So the cost has gone up, and it's not like we don't want to give this service free, but all towns, including, you know, I've seen, I've been closely watching, NCLM had these discussions going on from last two, three years. Um, luckily, we were, um, we escaped that increase because of our contracts that we had, you know, the, I don't know, Jeannie, if that would also be a good one of, yeah, discussion like, you know, you had an eight-year lock or, you know, five-year lock periods, that would not increase. And that is somehow, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, when is that, uh, coming up for, and it just came up for, um, renewal or something, right?
So, so we are in our sixth year of a ten-year contract. We have four more.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, four more years. And, and then, uh, if you look, how, how much was your original contract?
So the total cost of the contract, one point three million, uh, to provide all these services.
Yes. And, and is that the current, that what we are, we will be paying after the contract expires?
So that's the current year's, um, annual cost that we are, we are budgeted for. I'd have to collect some other information to, to provide you that detail.
Okay. So, so, so this, this was for me, like, I see, like, you know, it is suddenly coming. Um, and, uh, so I can understand, uh, some concerns people have, but at the same time, if we can lock, you know, a rate lock for five years or ten years, um, that way, it is, we, we know, and if we are not adjustable every year, that's kind of hard. And somehow, uh, Jeannie, if we can even remove, you know, the overhead of, uh, collecting it, like, you know, as, uh, uh, Vicky brought up a great point, you know, with our tax assessment or something like that, then that would help us to cut the overhead of, uh, you know, collections, like, we had to use CARRY, and, you know, obviously, they'll charge for that water bill and their services to do that. So you guys know what to do, but, um, I think, uh, we should, it's a step in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, I did want to point out, one thing that is growing is really our recycling cost. Uh, you'll notice there's a bit of a bump, uh, between twenty and twenty-one. So recycling is something that's, that we're kind of struggling with when we are talking about these contracts, uh, that we, we have to pay attention to. So it is growing, the number of households are growing that we add, residents each year, and, uh, it tends to be greater than your average inflation of two percent, um, that we have to absorb, uh, within the existing, um, funding model. And so I think I have a couple of comments. Uh, Councilmember Robati, twenty dollars a month is a lot of money for some families, fair statement. Um, Councilmember Fender, remember that this is, it hits residence living in house, in a house or a town home, so yes, um, anything outside of apartment, um, if, if that is, you know, residential household that, that we are talking about, and they have a choice to take their trash, uh, to convenience center. Um, Cal, uh, Mayor Protim Johnson, you have a comment?
So Jeannie, you're right. We've had, um, discussions about this. Uh, this is at least the third, if not fourth, time I can recall us having conversations about this, and it's, um, and it's not surprising we're having a conversation again. Um, it, this is a big part of our, um, our tax rate, a big part of, um, our, our overall expenses every year. Um, but I will tell you, I, I, if, as I recall, it has always been just about two cents on the tax rate. I mean, even back, you know, years ago, when we first started talking about this concept of, um, should we keep it within the tax rate or should we, um, or should we take it outside of the tax rate? I, I, I would be curious, and I don't need you to do a whole lot of work to figure that out, but I, I think every time we've had the conversation, it is just about two cents on the tax rate. So, um, that kind of tells me we are staying, somehow inflation is built into this whole thing, somehow, um, whether it's, um, reevaluation that's helping us or the growth rate in town. Um, so anyhow, uh, that's just kind of an aside, but, um, as far as your three options, um, the third one, about having a third party or some other entity, um, taking over the service, transferring the service, um, I'm not in favor of that. I've never been in favor of that option. So, um, so for me, that leaves the other two options. And I think it is going to be critically important to, um, get not only, you know, our environment, our Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee to weigh in, um, but to get our citizens to weigh in and, and to see where they fall, uh, on this issue. Um, before, before we do anything, I, I think I'd like to know what other cost savings, um, we could accomplish. Um, we, you know, options like you don't have to offer recycling every week, it could be every other week. Um, we don't have to offer for free a white goods pickup and a bulk item pickup, those could be at a, for a fee. Now, I know when, when we look back at, at your chart about the overall, um, um, where, where the, the costs come in this, yeah, go back, right, right there. You, you know, yard waste, you know, that, it, it's not a whole lot of savings there if you, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we eliminate it, but if you cut back on that service. It, it, there needs to be some significant changes to service, um, in order to, to see some kind of savings. So, uh, you know, the public may be interested in that. They may be okay with that. I, I don't know. Um, they may say, um, I don't need a free white goods pickup, I'm willing, you know, when I have an item, I'm willing, I'm willing for you, I'm willing to have to pay for it, you know, to come down and buy a sticker and put it on my item and put it on, on the curb, and then it's picked up, whatever. I mean, there are a couple of other options. I want to make sure that, um, we've explored everything and then, um, clearly want the, the citizens to weigh in, and like I said, our, our Environment and Stormwater Committee. And then the last comment I, I want to make that hasn't been made, I think if we do go, um, if we do go to some kind of billing system, it does not have to be a full-blown hundred percent cost recovery from day one. Um, that's not what we did with our stormwater utility. Our stormwater utility did not start out as a self-sufficient, self-sustaining utility. Um, it was supplemented for many years and then, um, and now, I believe, it is self-sustaining. And, uh, so there, there is that option to, to, to kind of ease into this. Um, and, and so all of that needs to be explored, and, um, this is a topic that the citizens have a, um, a strong opinion on. So, um, I want to make sure that we give them the opportunity, uh, to weigh in and to tell us, um, tell us what they think. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, it's, in terms of the two cents on the tax rate, yeah, yes, your, how you've adjusted your tax rate in past years and, and your, um, revaluation is a factor in that, that could shift and adjust, um, and, and really offset or absorb some of that. Uh, so I did want to acknowledge, uh, what you were indicating there. Um, I think we're at our round two comments. Let me just double-check that we've heard from everyone. Um, Councilmember Fender, comment number two.
Yeah, I just, um, I think, uh, Mayor Protim Johnson had a couple of really good points there, hearing from the public and looking at other, uh, cost savings. Um, you know, one idea could be, uh, doing the recycling every two weeks, um, as opposed to every week. When I was living in Fuquay, um, I was living outside of the town limit, so we had to, um, uh, contract ourselves to a, um, solid waste company, and, uh, they, and I believe it was thirty-five dollars a month, and it was, and that's nine years ago, and, um, they only picked up recycling every other week. So I was, I was really surprised when it came to Morrisville, and, um, it, it was every week. Although I prefer it being every week, um, that is one idea of looking, um, for, for some cost savings. I like the idea of looking at the, um, the white goods bulk pickup to, if there's other ways of, um, you know, charging for that as well. Um, so that's all I had. Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Garamelli, you have a comment number two?
Yeah, Martha is typing something. Does she have something before I go?
I haven't, I'm, I'm waiting for it. Oh, here it goes. Every other week, recycling was considered as part of the current agreement, and at that time, uh, desired, the desire was to stay weekly.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. Uh, so the other option also to explore, uh, Jeannie, is, um, like, the size of the trash can can also determine, uh, you know, how much, um, you know, you'll be collecting, if it is a town home or something, you know, or a person is, you know, desires a smaller one, then they don't have to pay a flat fee that you're charging all across, you know. And right now, if you look, uh, we have only one can that kind of fits all across the town, uh, but San Jose and other places that, you know, my sister lives, I see different cans, there are different companies that they do, and depending on how much trash you want to do it, they charge accordingly to that. So that was something, you know, what they're exploring, because if they, you know, don't have a whole lot of trash, why should they pay the same amount of money? If it is a person single and staying, then, you know, the amount of trash is less compared to a family of four, you know. So, and then the smaller can works for them and a bigger can for the bigger families. That's just a suggestion.
All right. Thank you very much. So we've been talking about this for a little while, and I'm going to try to wrap this up unless there are other last-minute comments. So I'm going to pause for just a second and let the siren go by. Okay. So no other, no other comments. So it sounds like I'm at least hearing, at least from four, that there's some reception to, at least continuing the conversation. Uh, I think I heard that there are, there's some information that we can provide you or bring back to you, um, and continue to explore. Uh, I'm going to pause here to see if Town Manager Page, if you wanted to jump in real quick before we close this conversation?
Thank you, Jeannie. Uh, I do appreciate council giving us some real good information to go back and work on this more. Uh, again, we've talked many times about our limited options to expand our capacity, uh, and so this is clearly one that we, we've mentioned it in the budget message the last two years, uh, but you've given us some information to at least continue to advance the conversation, so we appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. So good insight. Um, again, we have, if we decided to do this, we do have options and opportunities to work with other partners to sort of control that overhead, so just pointing you back to this spot, information. We've already done some preliminary evaluation of that, uh, internally. Um, but thank you, great insight, great conversation, um, good food for thought to carry this forward. I do get a, a general consensus, there is at least four of you okay with moving ahead, um, and bringing information back for continued conversation. Mayor is, uh, typing, so let me wait and see what.
You go ahead. I was just going to put a little bracket in the chat.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wrapping this one up, Mayor, in case you needed to say anything else before we depart this subject. Okay. All right. So moving along, streets payment and lieu. Uh, so this one's more about, um, policy development, uh, and let me just provide you with a little bit of overview. I'm going to talk about our current practice, and, um, then I want to really pinpoint what we see internally as some policy objectives we need to work on, uh, and then open the floor for some questions and discussions, to see, see what your insight is on this and, and how you feel. Um, so staff's goal here is mostly to inform, uh, and really discuss the intent of a future street payment and lieu policy. There's not a formal policy to really guide this. Um, you do have UDO that defines really how it gets, um, how it's a part of the equation for site plan development, um, and then we'll open the floor for, as I said, for some questions. So let me just give you some details here. The authority, um, is based on how you establish the UDO language, so it currently says that developers, in a really general high, high, um, altitude, if you look at this, that, that developers are required by the UDO to construct road frontage improvements with their site plan. Um, these are, these are consistent with our comprehensive transportation plan. We even require, um, a TIA study to understand what, what, um, their development is contributing, uh, when, when it is in place, uh, to, to the traffic. Um, uh, it allows, in the language of the UDO, about, and I believe it was in 2014 we made this adjustment, where we allow their flex, the flexibility in the language to provide the developer the opportunity to, instead of construct the portion of the road improvement and the frontage of their property, um, that they could pay this street payment and lieu for some of these improvements, rather than to construct that, that improvement. Um, so there's some flexibility provided, and, and in years past, when you've been here long enough, you've heard these conversations where, um, well, how do these payment and looms kind of come forward? It's a similar thing with the parkland payment and lieu. There are examples with parkland payment and lieu where we were dedicated property, it was really very undesirable, and it actually cost us money to, um, put fill in and try to bring the surface to some kind of function and use. Uh, so there's a couple of examples with parkland out there. Same thing really with, um, streets payment and looms. What, what we heard or what we were experiencing, experiencing is when, um, the What, what we heard or what we were experiencing is when developers did expand their road improvement and the frontage of their property, we had all these where it was at four lanes and then it would go back to two lanes. And then it would go to four lanes and it would go back to two lanes. Or we'd have a, a partial median somewhere and then further down there would not be anything. So there was this, um, lack of cohesiveness. So at some point, I believe council and, and the manager at the time felt it was important to provide some flexibility that maybe if the town, um, received or collected some Streets Payment and Lou money, we could do the bigger project. Um, so there's some pros and cons to that and, and we can talk about those a little bit. But, but the flexibility was meant to, to really provide the developer an opportunity, but to also recognize that Mooresville is maybe seeing something they weren't, um, that was creating problems in some way. Um, it is based on really their pro-rata share of what their traffic demands are generated by the development. Um, and the town is, it's meant to use to construct the improvements that the town feels is necessary in that area that benefits, um, that proximity, that, that development and the proximity of the, of the other, um, folks in that area, the improvement of the flow of the traffic. So if we were to look just by numbers, we've accumulated up to 3.6 million as of January, uh, June 30th of 2020. Um, I will, you know, this is a technicality or logistics. It is reported as a part of the general fund and it's a restricted portion of your fund balance. But it keeps growing. Um, I'd actually told Martha, if I had shown this, this chart out to 2015 and 2014, you would have seen, you would see that because we made that change, the collections in 2014 and 15 were very, very small. But they have leveled out. We are on average collecting about 750,000 in different kinds of Streets Payment and Lou from the developers. So again, developers prefer this method in some ways. Um, we're collecting an average of 570,000 annually. That is growing and accumulating in our reserves. So really the current practice, and here's where the rubber meets the road, sort of, so to speak, is there's no formal process that's guiding how we apply and use those reserves. So from planning, collecting the money, to finance, reporting and accounting for this reserve money, there's this gap of, of our understanding and application of what we should be applying those monies towards. Um, currently, when we do use it, recently the example is McCrimmon Parkway Extension. I did pull the proximity-based Streets Payment and Lou monies that we had collected to pay for a part of, um, some of that, um, major road improvement that benefited, you know, not just the folks in that proximity, but really the whole town. That, that McCrimmon Parkway Extension was a huge, huge project for Mooresville. Um, the reserves are accumulating annually. Uh, it's a, it's a manual tracking process. There's not even a formal automated efficient practice of tracking the collection and what, what these Streets Payment and Lou's are meant to pay for. And then the other thing that we're recognizing, there's actually a variety of transportation elements that are a part of this Streets Payment and Lou Reserve. It's, it goes from landscape medians to sidewalk segments, to traffic signal improvements, to added lanes, to, to the road being widening, widened in front of a piece of property. Um, so various elements are captured and put in here and that we need to sort out and understand, how can we get that money to work for us better? Uh, I will, Chris did a great job of really explaining the authority of the Parkland Payment and Lou. This is not the same. Um, there is different legislative authority at, at play here. Um, Parkland Payment and Lou is very spelled out by the general statutes. And then this is not like the town of Cary's impact fee. This is a flexibility option that council provides in the UDO for something you already require a developer, developer to do to build something. But you offer them a flexible option that if they don't want to build it, they can pay the, their pro-rata share of that equivalent cost. So the information I just want to share with you is where are we headed? Uh, you know, developing this policy, the objectives here and talking with the town attorney, with our planning director, um, and actually with our long-range transportation manager, Ben Howell, is, and our finance director, Streets Payment and Lou, we need to formalize this policy for reserves. We need to put a framework around it so that we know what we're going to do with this money and we're transparent. Uh, we need to effectively leverage that use of those reserves once they're collected. The moment it's collected, it becomes less valued because of the cost of construction going up. So we want that money to not sit in reserve. We want to put it in play and, and leverage it in the most appropriate manner. But we have to have a framework in order to do that, to be transparent to the developers who do pay the money and for, for specific things, that we are making those proximity improvements and that, that we are interested in as to why we offer that, that requirement. Uh, and we want to align that language obviously to our UDO and then our engineering design standards. More importantly, we need to know how is, how are others doing it? Because in the development community, one thing that we know is that they talk. They compare us to how others work when it comes to our UDO versus someone else. We want to be similar in nature. Uh, so we're going to do some peer comparison to make sure what are other, are people, are people handling this from the moment that it's actually collected to the point in which it's executed and leveraged. So from there, I'm going to, going to open up the floor. And these are, these are some of the discussion points that we, we wanted to put out there for you. Is what other information should staff consider from council's perspective as we look at developing that policy? What do you think's important factors? And then of course, if there are any other questions to talk about. So I already have Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Jeannie. Oh, I can hear my host now. Um, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying. When this one bullet item you have that says no formal use policy guiding application of reserves. I'm under the impression that when we require a developer to make in street improvements and he doesn't put the improvements on the ground, but maybe does a partial payment, that we take that money and that money is then used for that dedicated identified use sometime in the future. So like for instance, you know, we do this with traffic lights all the time. You know, a developer will come in and he'll pay his partial payment to have a traffic light installed. We hold on to that money and then when the traffic light is permitted by DOT, then that money goes towards that traffic light and the traffic light's installed. Are you telling me we're not doing that? We're not tracking money that way? That we're not putting it toward the use that we, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused. So the money is identified for specific projects. And, and we should be tracking them and then making sure those projects are on the ground one day.
So we have, is, so it's bigger than that. So yes, I agree, that is what the UDO says we're supposed to do. Um, but it's bigger than that, once it gets into our coffers and it gets into the reserve. We are tracking it and tracking it manually. And over time, what it specifically gets paid for, how we adopt those conditions at site plan approval have changed over the years. They have varied greatly. They've been very general or they've been very specific. And what gets captured in our manual process is not effective enough for us to, to reconcile and redirect the money as it was meant to be paid for. So we see there's room for improvement in the bigger process from the point in which it's collected at planning, through the authority of the UDO, all the way through finance and how they're reconciling it and they're recommending and applying it to capital projects as they come forward appropriately, uh, aligning with the intent and purpose of that proximity or for what the developer pays. So yes, I agree with what you're saying. We just have some disconnects that need to be addressed and a bigger framework put around this that not just governs how it comes in the door and what it gets applied for, but we have to connect the dots all the way to how it gets captured and reported in reserve and then reapplied. Hopefully that brings some clarity.
Okay, so, so you're, I guess I'm, here's my, my concern that when, when, um, and you're right, these, these are typically conditions on a, on a site plan or a rezoning. I want to make sure that the, the, the conditions that we have agreed to are actually coming to fruition.
Right.
And you're not telling me that, you're saying we just need help tracking that? That that's happening, but we need help tracking it?
So we need help tracking it and we have monies that are there that we need to, to be able to, to understand. They were paid in for a sidewalk for this particular segment. We need to now bring that forward. And we know how to process of bringing that forward and connecting it appropriately to the projects that it can work towards. And that's the piece that I think needs to be better defined so that the money, once it's put into reserve, we put it into play in the appropriate manner in which it was, um, a paid in for. So that it doesn't sit in the reserve, but it gets leveraged and utilized.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm 100% behind that. It needs to be used, leveraged, and we need to see these improvements on the ground like we expect.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that's the only comment or question I have right now. Thank you.
The Town Manager Paige, did you have a, a comment to clarify?
Yeah, I just want to reaffirm that with, with remembering that applicants are putting in sometimes very small percentages for future. And the policy development is, is to utilize those funds and leverage them to put the improvements on the ground. That is what we're trying to accomplish here.
An example would be a sidewalk segment that someone has actually paid on Mooresville Parkway and it totals up to $253. So how do we effectively create a sidewalk improvement with the $253? We have to combine it with something appropriately in the area and the proximity to where that it benefits that community, that neighborhood or development that paid it, as well as the others in the proximity, based on how it's defined. Uh, we have a, let me come back. Councilmember Rao, you had the same question. Did you have another comment?
Yeah, uh, my first question was answered. Um, and thank you for asking that, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. And I, for me, the tracking is very important, not only, um, for our staff and our council, but I would really like to see efforts made to get this kind of, um, information and data in a more visible place, um, for the public. And I've got some ideas about how we might even be able to work with our Open Data Portal and Smart City Initiative so that as we approve development, the public can see over time the amount of investment that's coming in. Uh, you know, we've today talked about Parkland Payment and Lou. We're seeing very large numbers. We're seeing, you know, over a million dollars of money that's coming in. And I just think sometimes it's not visible. And I think people need to know the kinds of conditions we're enforcing because we, it's easy to forget over time. And, um, somehow I feel like that message isn't getting out there to the public. And I just don't know, I mean, maybe that's not a conversation for now, but I think tracking is important, but it's almost, sort of, tracking is important in terms of how we grow and, you know, people saying we are growing too fast and we need to make investments in our infrastructure. But this council and previous councils and this staff and previous staff administrations have worked to set policies together that are bringing these kinds of investments. So I want to see that data in a dashboard or something that's visible. So people can see, these are the developments, this is how much was put in and, you know, this is what the specific use was. And maybe that's already there. I just want to know where that could be visible so that, you know, for all of the communities of Mooresville.
So that is, that is part of this equation, this bigger equation, is putting structure in place so that we can better effectively track it, make it more automated. But also, uh, in the conversation I just had this week with CIO Rick Ralph on Open Data and with Rodney Watkins, our GIS person that's handling Open Data, is how do we get access or accessibility to our financial information that talks about exactly what you're saying and demonstrating really what, what these things are that we are receiving and how they can be applied through capital projects. Uh, so that is a part of something that is to come. Um, but it is a part of the framework in which we have to build in our, in our accounting system to be able to effectively, um, to manage it and know what is there and reconcile how it comes in and how it effectively goes out into what. Um, when I indicated, um, that it was reported as a part of the general fund, there's, there is potential for us to refine that so that that money is captured better in the same, similar way that we do Parkland Payment and Lou. So that it is more clear, more transparent to the community. Uh, and that's what staff, part of the equation that staff's evaluating. Because currently it is commingled in that general fund, fund balance as a restricted element.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Colley, you have a comment?
Yeah, it's my understanding when we get Streets PIL, we get 150% of what the estimated cost at that time is. Is that accurate?
Correct, so there is some inflationary factor built in. Um, the question is, is that enough? And with the inflation of construction costs? And then there's a factor of how much time it may take for us to collect and put that money together to do a project and plan for.
Right, so I'm trying to elevate this because all the tracking and stuff that's operational, I'm sure that staff will figure out a way to do that well. Uh, from the policy perspective, I think that this PIL is a lot more restricted than the Parks PIL, which we can use anywhere in the park, even though it says the immediate area, we're pretty much using it anywhere. Um, so I'm less likely to want to continue this PIL for streets. Uh, as you mentioned, there's $253 that we can't really do anything with at this time. I would have rather had that developer go ahead and put in the sidewalk segment or something like that. There's a area in front of Extra Attic on 54, which they actually did the road build. So it is a little bit of an orphan segment, which is striped. Uh, there's like a big parking area there. But I think it's better to have that down on the ground than having money in the bank that we're going to have to use to build that later and it might cost us more later anyway. So from the policy side, I'd like to see us trying to get more of the development and the construction on the ground rather than continuing to take the PIL. Because we're getting towards buildout. So I think that these will be filling in the segments, not creating new segments ideally. Um, and I think it's important for us to go ahead and just get the improvements on the ground as quickly as we can to make that happen. Um, and that was pretty much all that I had for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rao, did you have a second question? Councilmember Garamella, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, actually going back to that, uh, you know, what TJ was saying, I would have had the same question is, um, we, I think, is it 150 or 175? I can't recollect in how much we charge. But that's a variable that I think we have, we can adjust it every year. Because many a times when I see a project, um, even though this is 150, personally, I don't know why I feel 175, uh, they, it is always very less. And, uh, so I understand that on previous PIL, one by 35 and all those are standards set in stone. But here, when we say 175, um, looking at the market price, you know, accurately, can this be adjusted as part of our budget? Uh, you know, when we do our budget, the, the fee structure, can that be, you know, changed accordingly? You know, we want to be fair to our developers. At the same time, we don't want to get undercut by, you know, they paying us less money. Um, so is that something Town Attorney Gray doable? Or is it, again, we are restricted for any of that? of that?
Uh, this is more a personal opinion than a chapter and verse, but I think we're pushing the limit at 150. I think we're, I think we're, I think we're, I think that's defensible, but I'm not sure anything higher than that is.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying go more than 150, but what is the accurate value of the project? I swear I feel like we are always charging very less, and even be, let it be even 100, for example, but let us accurately reflect the cost of it. So, and that keeps changing with the construction costs. So that is where I'm trying to say, if the construction cost has gone up 40% over the last four years, we should not be, you know, telling the developer, you know, your cost is this, but in reality, we are paying something else, you know, to really do the project. That's where I'm trying, I'm not asking by any means to increase it, but to reflect it correctly, the accurate, actual cost of it.
Well, just, you know, one, this is not exactly on point, but just allow me a comment. You know, when, so much of this discussion is driven by the traffic impact analysis. And so I know you all look at that, but when a project comes along, it really is critical to look at it because, A, whoever's bringing you the project has paid a professional engineer to do a traffic impact analysis and come up with recommendations for what impacts there are, you know? And then, B, UDO requires that, that be peer reviewed by the town's traffic engineer, and we make the developer pay for that peer review. So that is a very important document, and a lot of the improvements, the recommended improvements, sidewalks, traffic light contributions, another lane here, another paved turn lane there, come out of those TIA's. And I think we've all seen areas where, you know, you pave an extra lane, but then the guy next to you hasn't developed yet, and so the traffic has to come back in to the two-lane road. And then the next down the road is another development, and so you widen back out to another lane. And I think the concept of the payment in lieu, if used wisely, is that you, town pulls those monies together, Genie obviously wisely invests them, you earn some interest over time, and then you come and you pave that, add that additional lane all the way through the length of the corridor. Anyway, in concept, it should work, obviously doesn't always work exactly that way. But anyway, I just commend the TIA to you because that's the source of a lot of these improvements in the, in either the construction or the payment in lieu of the construction.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, but the key is, do they also determine the cost of it, or do they say like, you know, this is your frontage, like say 100 feet of sidewalk and whatever it is? So then that is the cost that the town calculates and gives it, or the professional engineer calculates it?
I think Michelle has a comment, she could comment on top of me, but I think it's, if it's, if a PIL is going to be taken, then we compute, the town staff, the development that computes and the town staff confirms today's cost, to make the improvement today. And then that's multiplied by one and a half times.
I believe I heard Michelle in the background. Did you want to make a comment?
I think I was going to say pretty much exactly what Attorney Gray just said. The engineer provides a detailed cost estimate that's reviewed against industry standards by our engineering staff for those specific improvements.
Very good. And Michelle is actually bringing, it's the access and circulation portion of the UDO. You're working on that and bringing that back to council in the future. Am I not, am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct. So Long Range Planning Manager Ben Howell is heading that up, but the PIL is located within that access and circulation chapter. So this is, you know, good timing in terms of coordinating of all the different pieces.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Attorney Gray, and thank you, Michelle, for, for your comment. Let me move to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Genie. I just wanted to say that I really like the middle policy objective about traceability. You just, no, 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 go back. Yes, yes.
Here?
No, you were fine.
It was the right way.
Yes. Developing the appropriate system of tracking and reporting is key for transparent government, and we have had challenges from some of our property owners about previous payment in lieu to road improvements and, and having that gap between the initial payment in lieu and the improvement itself. And so having an appropriate tracking system, although we might not be able to improve the roads at the rate we want, we'll at least be able to have some understanding of sequencing and where things are as far as progress goes over time. We should try to do our best to identify a unique area and then when that is slated to be improved. Also, we have to take payment in lieu sometimes because it's not feasible to improve a road or an area at the time of construction for a development. And so we still need the capability of collecting payment in lieu. However, I too am in favor, like the mayor, of asking the developer, if possible, to go ahead and improve the sidewalk, or improve the driveway, or improve the lane at the time of construction, because typically it is a less expensive endeavor. When you already have the equipment on site, you already have the equipment, the materials, et cetera. Also, if we do think to ask for that improvement at the time that the construction's being done, if a larger project comes along, there will be inherent sidewalks and so forth. So if those sidewalks are ripped up to improve two-lane to a four-lane, the town will not have to add battlements, I think, because those connections would already exist and must be reinstated. So an example might be Aviation Parkway. We know that it's going to go from its current footprint to adding more lanes eventually. And if we have properties that have existing sidewalks and so forth, they would have to replace those sidewalks. But if we have properties that don't have any sidewalks, they would not have to replace the sidewalks. If the town wanted the sidewalks installed, they would have to pay an additional fee. So it's, it's very important that we have that accountability so we can give ourselves credit when we do improvements over time, but also we would like to have as much of this traffic construction done at the time that the original project was done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Airport Aviation is actually a really good example of a placement that you need to think about, should you really be taking the payment in lieu versus requiring a sidewalk to be built that is only going to get potentially ripped out in, in the future. So I appreciate that. I think, Michelle, did you want to add something to that? I see you have another comment here.
Yeah, thank you, Genie. Just, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson mentioned something that, you know, we've been talking about road widening and sidewalks. A lot of times what we see with these PILs are that intersections are heavily studied with those TIA's. And so the TIA may recommend that a turn lane, you know, will need to go in at some point, or a traffic light may need to go in at some point, but it doesn't yet meet the warrants. So a lot of times what we will get is a contribution for that development's proportional share for when warrants are met and that improvement could actually be made. So we do see a lot of those, or it may just be a situation where we know an NCDOT project is coming and it just makes sense to kind of wait. I also see a lot of PILs for medians, you know, and you're not going to put in half of a median. So that's another situation where we do tend to lean towards the PIL. So it is a variety, and in a lot of ways, I think the flexibility allows us to, you know, accumulate money over time until warrants are met and improvement can go in and just do some things that makes sense. Now, there are other times where developers are absolutely required to make the improvements upfront. The PIL just gives us the flexibility.
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Rao, did you have a comment? I think I, no, okay. All right. I will think I've heard, I think, good information inside of council to continue to proceed with this. Staff's going to, going to work on this. You're going to get more comeback in, in the near future from the planning department to really talk about the UDO authority and what, what it should say or needs to say in that access and circulation, because Streets Payment in lieu is a part of that. So we get more conversations there. Staff is going to work at the bigger level to put some framework and structure around this to really see what other communities are doing and bring some information like that back to you and recommendations of, of what a policy might need to look like. And you'll have another opportunity to talk about the thing, begin to develop more and more clarity on the purpose behind us. I think when we put these things in front of you, it'll become clear what we really need to work on. But this particular conversation is very high level, just to kind of start, start the dialogue. Are there anything else on this particular one? Okay, so I can move through the next one fairly quickly. This one is more informative to just let you know a status of where we're at. So again, a brief overview, our current fee model, and really what our next steps are going to look like. So our goal here is really to inform council and let you know that we're working on a stormwater master plan that's going to help us establish really what a recommended fee model should look like in the future. So the stormwater overview is that the program itself is self-sustaining now, as Mayor Protim indicated. It was subsidized, subsidized by the general fund on a small level when we first established it, and gradually over the years, we've sort of weaned ourselves off of that. But the purpose of it is to meet the mandates at the state level for stormwater management and erosion control, and the fees are leveraged to pay for it. It is an enterprise fund. The fees are meant to pay for this whole service program, now that it's not subsidized by the general fund. The current fee is at $25 per ERU. The challenge here is, is the years since this has been created and the fee was established, it really was established for a base budget, a base program. So you'll see here, the tip of the scales is your expenditures, the fee is only really generating the cost recovery for your operation or your overhead, but it's really not giving you a lot of leverage in your capital to, to take care of these projects that your stormwater master plan is going to collect and prioritize and put in front of you the things that the program should be addressing at a bigger level or at a, at a higher level above the basic structure that it's currently sitting at. So the cost recovery is really only capturing primarily the overhead and a little bit towards investing for those capital improvements that are related to the program. The stormwater, the current fee model, again, it's based off of the utility fee, the ERU is your primary revenue source. It brings in the bulk of the revenue. The other portion of the fees really come from a plan review. It's a very small and de minimis amount, so most of it is recovering through the fee. So the fees, the stormwater fee, the next step is the program should be, was completed, the stormwater program funding report was completed in May, and that gave us some good information and insight to, to let us know really where do we need to focus? And in this case, it said we need to develop more of that capital improvement inventory and prioritization, and that is what Ben Mills has been working on to, to develop that so that we can bring that forward, just as we did sidewalks and your capital investment plan, and have that prioritization and understanding of what those capital improvements needs, needs are and what they look like. And then the current fee model, it basically assessed that the current fee model has limited capacity to fund future capital improvements once we define them. And our billing process is extremely manual for stormwater program overall, and it's cumbersome. So we, it was indicating through the study that was done in May that there was some need for efficiencies here in this. So that was one of the potential benefits. If we went to a solid waste user fee, we could combine that with the solid waste, the stormwater program fee, and create some internal efficiencies in billing processes here. And then, of course, dealing with a better level of long-term capital improvements, the assessment said that the fee would require an increase in order to execute what the program should be addressing. The next step is really working to finish up that master plan that's in progress, it's going to detail those current and future needs, creating a capital projects database that's really defining what, what's out there that we need to work on, and then doing a prioritization of that. And then working with finance to develop a fee model structure that optimizes us aligning to the stormwater mandates at a better level than just the basic, basic program. And we also want to improve our billing, collection, and efficiency. So with that, I went through that really fast, but again, the purpose of this is more informational, let you know where we were at, that, that the stormwater fund model is going to be a work plan for fiscal year '22. This would be something that we would be discussing with implementing in fiscal year 2023. Hopefully, we would have that information brought forward and have future conversations with council to do so. And then staff, of course, is open to hearing any of your comments and feedback at this time as we start down this path. So I'll open the floor at this point. I believe, uh, Mayor Colley, did, do you have a comment, or you're just making a note?
I was hoping we could recognize Assistant Manager Zudma for a comment, and then we'll have our questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hold until you finish this portion of the discussion, but before you go to break, please.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protim, you have a comment?
So, thank you, Genie. This is a good update. The only comment I have is the creation of the capital projects database is going to be critically important to have as we, and I know you know that, but I, I just feel like I have to say that it's going to be critically important to have questions around funding and budget items, and a 2023 budget discussion is going to have, we're going to need that information. So that's, that's all, I want to emphasize that. So thank you for planning ahead.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I know Ben Mills appreciates that. Other comments? Mayor Colley, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to echo what Mayor Protim just said. The, on slide 31, the creating a capital projects database and the capital project prioritization, that's going to be really important to help educate our residents about where these dollars are going to be going. I would like us to, as much as we can, try to accelerate that so that we can use this fund to create a capital fund to actually use stuff, so we don't have to use alternate funding mechanisms, but actually align these with where, where the fees would be most appropriate. funding mechanisms, but actually align these with where the fees would be most appropriate rather than spreading them everywhere, but aligning them to our ERU fee. I think that's going to be important moving forward, especially when we have the budget discussions later. People are going to want to know what they're getting for that. Like the sawmill parkway, like, we're going to have to break that out. The creek restoration, 1.4 miles, how much of that 7.5 million is for that, for example, and what other projects are so important that they're going to be used for this fund?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments before we wrap this up and allow Assistant Town Manager Zudma to make a comment? All right. More to come on this. Again, this was more of a seed planter and to let you know where we're at, and you'll hear more from Ben Mills as he progresses. So thank you very much. Assistant Town Manager Zudma.
Thanks, Jeannie. So Mayor, just a comment on the agenda for tonight. As you know, we've been working with you to try to keep these to three-hour meetings. You still have three agenda items left. Would tell you that staff is comfortable with pushing the retreat debrief. We can handle that offline with you. Obviously, your call on brainstorming, but would tell you that the bond discussion needs to happen tonight and needs to be able to work itself to sort of conclusion. As you know, we've got a very specific and particular calendar that we're following for that process. So just a reminder that that sort of needs to happen. The other two items can be dealt with differently if you so choose.
So I'm in agreement with that. The bond discussion is scheduled for one hour, so I think that's an important one that we do knock out tonight. Looking to see, and I think that, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think that we're going to be okay with retreat debrief being done outside of this meeting, and we'll try to get to brainstorming and roundtables at an upcoming time. If anyone has any issues with that, please put it in chat. I'm seeing people are generally in agreement with your suggestion. Okay? So that will be the plan. Thank you, Assistant Manager. Great suggestion. So at this time, it is 8:33 according to my computer clock. We do need a 10-minute break before we attack this next issue, which is really important. So why don't we reconvene at 8:44, please? Thank you very much. Okay. I show 8:44. I'd like to pass it back to Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, to facilitate our next item. Ms. Hooks?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is another one where I'll say, hold your questions and comments till the end, and let me work through and provide just a little bit more depth to a few of these comments, especially from Bond Council. So bear with me. So the first thing, we'll review the ballot preview, then I'll go into really the debt capacity follow-up. But the key discussion goals tonight, it's really about the bond itself. We need an agreement on the ballot categories. So it's going to be really important council stay at the high altitude when you're thinking about this, and I'll try to give you some prompts to help you get there. And then really, what is your preferred debt funding model helps us with the bigger picture, not just what is bond-related, but what is that whole debt capacity picture that you want us to leverage, that capital investment planning perspective that you're looking for? And then some potential adjustments to maybe some project alignment. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Let me, let me share with you the feedback. As a result of your feedback, I went to Bond Council and they provided us some guidance. And so obviously, they are in agreement that it would be unusual for you to have four ballot questions. Not unheard of, but unusual. They'd say that two to three is the typical norm that you want to shoot for. And remember, this isn't the only bond referendum you can do. You could potentially in future years leverage another bond referendum and do another two to three ballot questions, depending on your debt capacity, obviously. You asked that we incorporate in title, in the ballot title, some key words. They said, obviously, that's important. They got that. There was just a few that I think that I picked up on. One was amenities for parks, and then the other one was connectivity for sidewalks. The last two bullets here, where they really sort of pressed their experience and really the language of the bond law, they said that incorporating additional descriptive words such as technology and sustainability, they felt like that fit better when you communicate and do your outreach and the project scope, to the projects that you're trying to align to the bond referendum. They said that you really do need to avoid bogging down your ballot language because when a person's at the stand of vote, they need to have some clarity and easily read through it and get the feel for what is the question. So they tend to be a little more prescriptive in the language there from the, from Bond Council and what they recommend and how, how much you might fill that up or bog it down is important, they said, to consider. The real difficult one was, and I had actually had my conversation before March 9th where I posed the question, because I anticipated this potentially could come from council. I posed the question to Bond Council before your March 9th conversation about combining the public safety category with public facilities. And so they thought about it. So they thought about it since before March 9th, and then I can't, I went back to them after your March 9th input and asked the question again. And they said that they, they did their due diligence, they put in their thought, and they said that in their experience, and I tell you, there's a lot of years' experience in the two folks that Morrisville has worked with for years now with our Bond Council, that there's no broad bond category, that you can legally combine a public safety facility with other town center-related facilities. So when we, when we prepare the public facility, the projects that potentially fall into that, they really are town center-related type projects outside of the fire station. So you can't do that really without a risk to the community and number one, actually not aligning to what the letter of the law says around bond referendum and what these categories are meant to do. But they, they said or advised that it looked as though we were mashing unlike projects together, and they said that the fire center or fire station, if it had been in the proximity of the geographical location of the town center, then that would be different. They could look at it differently. So what they're saying to you is that the geography of the projects that are within a category is important, that the categories are meant to be somewhat specific of what you're trying, the goal you're trying to obtain or invest in. So in this case, he said, based on the project types, that you clearly want to invest in a fire station, that would be a ballot question, and clearly you want to invest in improvements for a town center. That is different than a fire station. He said that you would also run the risk that if we combined the two, that your voter could be faced with a difficult decision, that they support the fire station if it were in one ballot question, that they support the fire station, but they do not support the town center, and therefore it could cause your voter results to be something different. And more importantly, he said, you could face litigation and challenges because you forced two things to go together in a ballot. You could later be challenged in the execution or development of these projects that they didn't align to the letter of the law when it comes to the statutes around bond referendum. So that's their advice. So where are we at now? So at this point, we have two options to consider. Now remember, the bond referendum is not the only vehicle that we have to leverage to get things done in your bigger debt capacity picture. Remember, we're focusing on bonds, installment financing, use of reserves, and other restricted elements or resources, and that's critically important to keep that in perspective. But in order to move the bond forward, we have to focus in on, okay, what do we want to put in front of the voters? So we have option one, which is really the original option, where you have a ballot question for public safety, parks and recreation and amenity improvements, street sidewalks and connectivity improvements. The impact here is that it does allow you to really leverage other types of financing sources for town center. Now, there's different kinds of strategies around installment financing for a town center that you could potentially leverage the increase in growth that comes from that development in town center from the increase in ad valorem or tax base, that that town center improvement generates in the future. And it could also, also realistically allow you to further develop and define what is town center. The other option when talking with the bond attorneys is, okay, if you could shift fire stations three out and it be installment financing. He said that it makes, it's a viable project for an installment financing for a AAA organization to acquire a potentially very good and attractive interest rate. And then that would leave your town center development, your parks and your streets and sidewalks as part of your bond package. It does allow really you to move the fire station ahead of the bond referendum, and it does provide in the bond itself some opportunity to tell the voters that you want to invest in the town center through bonds. So some things to keep in mind as you're thinking about or contemplating how you would respond or what might be your preference to guide staff is that your bond authority, you do need to, for this bond referendum, if you were to leverage $40 million, it has to be executed or issued within seven years. There is a possibility you could get an extension, but generally seven years. The other thing to keep in mind is town center is in progress. You're still developing what it is or what it means to be a town center and what projects the town would be responsible for investing in as a part of the public-private partnership. And then obviously, as the Bond Council recognized, is, you know, with a AAA unit such as ourselves, we could really acquire good installment financing interest rates, and you could use it for land acquisition or other facility-type constructions. That could include some of your town center items as well. As long as you have good collateral, you should be able to exercise your installment financing within the definition of that law. The other thing to remember is this is one single bond referendum. We can't package everything in the bond referendum. So the bigger question is, what do you want the voters to see in the ballot questions? I think that's the most critical question. So to avoid having four ballot questions that are, as Bond Council said, unusual and could be confusing, as council actually impressed upon me at our last discussion, what do you want to show the voters that you want the bond referendum to potentially work towards as big categories of investment? That's the first question. I think the other part before you answer that question is you have to consider that what projects are at or near really a state of construction. I mean, we intentionally were preparing projects to align to a bond referendum. That does matter in some cases, and that's something that I think you should consider. So in this case, I have to ask for staff to proceed and giving the direction to Bond Council so that we can prepare all the appropriate language with the bond and then move on the other items that are a part of the bigger debt financing capacity strategy. I need to understand, are you okay with option one or option, really alternative two? Again, it goes back to what do you want or feel is important to put in front of the voters as a ballot question? So I'll pause there, and I will facilitate through chat some Q and A clarification, and then hopefully try to round us up to some directions. Mayor Colley, did you want to make a comment first?
Yeah, I look forward to hearing what everyone else has to say, but right now, I think option one still works really well for us. I think it's what voters will expect and what they will definitely support. I see all three of those going through very easily, especially when everyone's educated about the benefits.
Councilmember Rabadi, you have a question?
Yes. Could you clarify for me what a development would, I understood that we were, the developers were going to be doing the development?
I'm sorry, you were breaking in and out, and I missed a portion of what you said. Can you please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said that I understood that we had RFPs out for developers to do the development of town center. So what would, what would be included in that town center development question in option two?
So right now, it would be the active project concepts that we currently have that aren't far off to what the general vision of town center has been from council. That's a town green. It's a parking, some type of parking lot or indoor structure. Now, that costs varies greatly from one to the other. And then a community center in town center. Also, it could be the multi, the multi-use space that was added. It could be a part of that equation in the out years and/or town hall. So those were, those were newer projects that are left into your prioritization on purpose, but they could be a part of what is in or what you would request for investment dollars as a part of a bond referendum. Now, again, the bond...
Because of land acquisition?
Go ahead. Yes.
Land acquisition. Okay. In that, I think that I would be in favor of option two, because, especially if we can use installment financing for the fire station, which would be a comparatively smaller project than a community center or with a town green with a parking structure, you know, I, I mean, I would be in favor of moving the town center into the bond discussion.
Okay. Now, land acquisition, because you have collateral, is also another good one for town center as an installment financing. So I'm just sharing that with you, not contradicting anything you say. I'm just sharing the option in there.
Yeah. Just in general, Jeannie, one thing that I would like to kind of get at, that I would like the ballot questions worded in such a way so that we can always use part of the bond money for land acquisition. That's really important.
So that is definitely one in which is understood by the Bond Council, that that's critically important in all categories. It is a legal compliance item. So no matter how general the language is, land acquisition is a critical component to developing capital projects, more than likely.
Okay.
So it's sort of a natural nexus that the two are related.
Okay. Thank you very much for that indication. Please, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thanks, Jeannie. I am in favor of option one, not to discount the importance of the town center. That is critically important, but I want to make sure that this bond package, when it's approved, and I believe option one would be heavily supported by the public. I think when, when this bond, when these three bond packages are approved, I want to be able to act quickly. And we have some really good projects that are ready, that are designed, that are ready to move with the, with the option one. So that, that is really important to me. So I'm in favor of option one, not to, again, not to discount the importance of the town center and all that's to come there, but I think we have some, we have some other options for town center. Thank you.
That is actually something I have heard in the past, is when we do bonds or go out for bond referendum, people do or have told us the expectation is that we do turn it around. That's a very valid point. Councilmember Rao, you said option one?
Yes, option one, for all the reasons stated.
So I need to hear from other council. If there's questions to clarify before you provide a response? If there's questions to clarify before you provide a response, I'm glad to address that. Anything that I can do to help you move through this. Councilmember Garamella, option one, no comments? With the options, yes, I can. Councilmember Skuggins Johnson asked me to move back to the ballot options. And option two.
So am I the only one not speaking yet?
I believe so.
Yes, so if you could just go back down one more to option two. So for option two, I see that as not as favorable to like the public at this time. The more pressing items that are very like value-add and so forth are really bundled more in option one. So I'd be more favorably leaning towards the option one because we do definitely want this to pass because it's going to offer the town less expensive financing, even though we have a really good credit rating. You know, our world changed in one year dramatically due to the pandemic. We can't predict the future. But if we have a bond that we have authorized by the people, we know we can spend that money and it should be pretty secure. And we can commit to those project areas. So I'm in favor of option one.
Thank you. I did miss somebody. I missed Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, how can you forget me?
Oh, your picture wasn't on my screen at the time.
All right. I'm on the fence, but given, you know, listening to the other town council members, I would be in favor of option one.
Okay, so we have a general consensus for option one. And if there are no other questions or items to consider, I'm going to move forward on option one and working with our bond attorneys so that we can be ready for that formal adoption of our ballot language. You'll see that language come back to you before then. And thank you very much. I have other questions, so hold on. All right, so I'm going to move through our debt capacity model. Follow-up, that will take care of our other questions. So again, I mentioned this before and I keep reminding you on purpose is when we talk about this debt financing model, it's a much bigger picture than just the bond referendum. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and understood. It is that we can leverage multiple things at play here. And what is, I believe, the truest capital investment planning or long-range planning conversation that we've had. It's been very productive to be able to see something like that over a five-year picture. Exciting. But we leverage, you know, not just one bond. You could potentially leverage multiple bonds. You could do installment financing as a combination or a hybrid. We could leverage and throw in use of other reserves, which is, in this case, maybe Parkland Payment and Lou to move a project up effectively in the list that we think we heard from you that might be a critical component. And then obviously, when there are grant opportunities, we're going to go out there and we're going to seek them. And that can also build back in capacity to leverage in other places in this bigger picture. But to move it forward, the project alignment, I sort of heard a few things from council that I just want to pause and check in with you is you potentially could, in talking with the financial advisors, shift some future parks and open space funding that we sort of showed up in the more recent years, '22 and '24, and then I think we had a group in '26. You could shift that and swap that for public facilities. But I think that's an up to council. You can't make wholesale changes because your debt capacity is articulated in the years in which we need to issue and so that we don't exceed the number of years that we're out of balance or out of compliance with one of the debt ratio items. So I'll show you that in just a minute. Something else I heard is you may move a public facility, town center, by flopping it out with another project that's in one of the more recent years. The thing that I think I heard or resonated the most with me that might make council happy would be this project list that we're talking about is really moving Crabtree Creek Nature Park back up to 2023. And that's related to potentially the grant and the timing associated with the grant. And working with Davenport and the financial advisors, we could potentially successfully do that. And that's through a hybrid of leveraging potentially Parkland Payment and Lou or another reserve to have partial financing and then a partial coming from the reserve itself. So it's really important to, when we talk about possibly moving something up or down the list, is we have to pay attention to these buckets down here. In this particular case model is in '22, we should probably stay around that $14.5 million of issuance. Otherwise, it affects our debt ratio in the number of years in which we're not compliant. And currently, in this model, it was eight years. Then in '23, leveraging no more than $16 million. That's really that installment financing that's for Politeworks. And then 2024, a smaller issuance of $4.1. And then in 2026, $20 million. So that's using this particular example here. I think what I was hearing mostly from council, and this is where I sort of need to check in with you, is aside from where the projects fall in whichever case, I think first I need to ask you just this general basic question. If you can stay up here with me, is what debt capacity model best aligns to council's total investment interest? That's the big question. Let's not focus so much on the prescriptive details of the project and what years they align in because we can work with that. When I talked to the financial advisors, they sort of kind of rev me up for this conversation. They said, be careful of being too prescriptive in this kind of conversation because you are talking about a long-range plan. And on a long-range plan, a lot can change. They told you, and even in their model, it's very conservative. And it's a conservative model on purpose because they want you to have a better picture year over year so that potentially you could mitigate risk and/or reach greater potential to leverage additional capacity. So the bigger question first and foremost is how much do you want to invest? Which model works best for you? Is it the two cent? Or is it the three, one of the three cent models? That helps us refine our approach. So I think I'll pause there. Again, let's not be looking at the projects just yet. So I believe I have a couple of folks. Our mayor colleague said case two. So that's the three cent model, getting the most investment that we can. And it's generally at about $56 million. So how are others feeling? Or is there some questions I need to clarify first? It's all about how much are you interested in leveraging for the community in a five-year window? Tough question, I know. Anything I can clarify? Mayor Protam was typing. Mayor Protam, you have a comment?
So Jeanie, the difference between case two and three, they're both the three cent options. It's just a matter of when projects occur. And you don't want us to talk about that right now?
Not yet. So basically, is it a two or three cent model are you interested in? And then we can work on really what are some things that need to shift. And then we'll probably get to whether it's the 56 or the 53.
Okay. Okay, so my initial reaction is that we need to, we need to start with the three cent option. When we go out for public comment and have the public weigh in, it's going to be critical to share with them what that means to them. And I know we've already talked about this because you talked about how much the options would mean to a typical $250,000, a house valued at $250K. And so you talked a little bit about that. But I think it's going to be important to share with folks what this means specifically to them and their pocketbook. That's number one. And then number two, I think we also need to be able to articulate if we don't go with the three cent option. There is a two cent option, but, you know, obviously, it's lesser projects that get built and developed over time. So I think that messaging is going to be important. And the public needs to then tell us where they land, what kind of matters to them and how much they are willing to absorb in a tax increase. So does that help you a little bit?
It does. You know, the tax, increment tax increase is connected to your bond, but it is also connected to the other projects that you're leveraging a different financing instrument. So remember, when Davenport presented this picture, it was a much bigger picture than just specifically the bond project. It is for, in case two, $56 million worth of investments. That is bond, installment and leveraging other resources that we actually have. And you are right, we have to build that into the message as to what they are getting for their tax dollars and what that impact is to the household.
Yes.
And we've done that before with our bond referendum communications in the past to try to lay out that picture as best we can.
And you all have done that very successfully in the past, too. So thank you.
So generally, you're at the three cents? Is that what I was hearing right now?
Yes, but I need the public to weigh in here. You know, I need to hear from the community as to whether that is something they can tolerate.
And you did get a little bit of input through the portal. And it wasn't specific to a one cent, two cent or three cent, but it was asking the question, would you be willing to leverage a tax increase for additional capital improvements? And a lot of the folks either agreed or they said a maybe because it depends on the projects. And I think that's probably where you're sitting, depends on the bond.
That's where I'm landing to. It depends on the projects and then, again, if they can, if they'll tolerate that kind of an increase. That's going to be important to me moving forward.
Okay. Councilmember Rabadi, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that, I think that case two, for me, gets us the most projects and the most investment in the town. I think that people want us to invest in the town. And I think that the more projects that we can get done, especially, you know, if we can show people that we have projects shovel-ready and can complete. Out case two, I think that gives us the most bang for our buck. And I think that, and I think that the public, I think that if we have projects that are-
I think I lost her. All right, I think we lost Councilmember Rabadi. Oh, no, there she goes. I think I heard you say Councilmember Rabadi, if you're back, case two. Okay. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Rao. You put in the chat box deciding between case one and two, but you think the three cent works best?
Yeah, yeah, three cents.
Okay.
Trying to minimize my comments.
I appreciate that. Councilmember Skuggins Johnson, you have a comment?
Thank you, Jeanie. I have a couple of questions about this specific model. The reason I'm asking them is because the last time we took out a bond, we took forever to spend the money and some of the projects kind of lingered beyond what the voters had expected, like the Aquatic Center. And this model is specifically looking at how we would spend the bond money that would be voter-approved? Or is it all debt?
It's all debt. It's both your bond and your installment financing.
Okay. I'm a little cautious about being able to spend it all at once or quickly because there is a capacity that we have within our town staff with a lot of activity going on. Right now, I'm most comfortable with two because I think the capacity that we have with all these projects going on could be reasonably met. And the projects could go on schedule and we would have an appropriate support. I'm a little wary at this time about the three cent model just because I'm worried about the capacity to do some of these projects in a more accelerated way. I don't want to overcommit. That's my concern. So at this point, I'm going to kind of pull back a little and look at the two cents as my choice. Thank you.
Okay. Resources are how we get things executed. So that's a fair statement to make. Councilmember Fender.
So I have a question about the process here because are we using this debt capacity model in the total amount of this, whether we're going to go for the 56 or what is that, 39? Are we using this as a way to back into what the amount that we're going to ask for for the bond?
It's part of the bigger picture. So bond is a part of the bigger comparison here. So what Davenport provided you was what was your total debt capacity over the next several years? And then knowing what we want to align for bond issuance and projects we have shovel-ready, what capacity do we have left for other things? So other things in this case would be our Politeworks facility we know we need to move forward on. And then after that, what's left over for adding in town center, other transportation and transit projects? So it was trying to get you the big picture over a five-year window of what capacity you could leverage using bonds, installments and then any other financing instrument that we could utilize.
So how are we going to get into, from this, how are we going to determine the amount of what our bond is going to be and how much increase in the tax rate we're going to be asking for?
So the tax rate in this model is combined is on the total debt. So the debt for the bonds and the debt for the installment financing. So it's for that big picture. So it's not just singularly tied for the bond item.
Well, I guess that's what's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, that's what's tripping me up is we went from talking about bond language to the- to this debt capacity model that's all debt and this cent increase for all the debt. But how are we going to, we still going to have to, how are we going to go back to determine what is the amount we're going to ask for on the bond?
So you don't ask for a specific amount of tax rate with your bond, but you do indicate that you will be leveraging or may lever, I think language is more clearly, may leverage a tax rate increase to pay for the debt associated with the bond.
And what I'm saying is, when I said amount, I meant are we going to ask for 20 million or 30 million? Or whatever it is? How do we take, what are we going to do from this discussion to get to the amount that we're going to ask for on the bond?
On the bond, yes. Because you have identified option one, I can now go back and restructure what, in this model, what's going to be coming from bond debt versus what gets shifted or has to be adjusted for installment financing. And then I can put that number back in front of you. That will be part of that ballot conversation next. So you'll be able to see that. And then from there, you'll see what the overall plan can work for, for the total debt capacity, leveraging all of your resources. So that, in this case, is not just bond installment, but throwing in actually other types of reserves so that we can leverage the, which case you're most interested in, the big picture. So I think I got your question now. Did I answer it appropriately for you?
Yes. So I don't know, maybe I'm just not understanding this correctly. But I feel like I can't answer this question here, whether I'm wanting the two cent model or the three cent model until I understand the total amount we're going to ask for in the bond.
Okay. So your total amount that you would be asking for in the bond is, which parks and open space, is really your case one. The two cent could be equivalent, could be the equivalent to the option one. And then the other cent that comes in with case study two gets you 256 in your total debt capacity picture. So that's just a shortcut way of looking at it, if that helps put some perspective for you.
So does that mean then that when we say, if we were to say case number two, that we are in actuality asking for a two cent increase with the bond, but then another one cent increase in our, in our tax rate that we determine with our budget for next year?
The three cent is, I'll try to say this in a different way. The tax increment is totally tied to paying for the debt we're projecting in the model. So the three cents associated in case two is what we need to be able to pay for the debt to leverage 56 million dollars worth of investment over a period of time. So the three cents associated to the bond and the installment financing. If you need me to break it up, I think I just gave you a short and quick way to look at two cents is isolated in case one best resembles option one in your bond selection.
Okay.
So again, I'm not sure that I'm helping bring clarity to that for you.
You are a little bit. I just, I need more time to think about it. I need to absorb that a little bit before I can say with this, whether I'm for case one or two.
Okay. Let me see, who's next? Councilmember Rabadi just confirmed case two. If we can show shovel ready projects? Okay. Councilmember Garamilla, you have a comment?
Yeah, Jeannie, I'm not able to see this. Is there any way you can like expand it? I don't have a magnifying glass. No.
That helps.
Yeah, and this helps. So my other question is, right, if we see, take two cents or three cents scenarios, remind me one more time that this is, how much time will it take to repay it back, completely debt-free of this bond?
So it's memory.
So if say 2022, we are taking this bond, then...
So each of the instruments for issuance would be leveraged at 20 years. So it would be, I think, until 2030 something by the time that they were all paid off. I don't have the report in front of me, but it was in Davenport's report for case study two, it did articulate the year in which it would all be paid off.
No. So like the two and three, like I'm also thinking, right, like we will be, I'm sure, not this year, but next year, there might be some tax increase. And then over the years, there will be more tax increase. So, and then Wake County will come behind and increase some taxes on their end too because they didn't do it last year. So how does that all roll with our debt capacity? You know, like, does that impact the tax that we charge? That won't, right? It's only the debt that we do is what impacts the rating, right?
I'm not sure that I'm following your question, but can you restate that?
Yeah, so let me restate. So like, we don't have forecast of what tax we will be charging on our residence over the next five years either, right? We know we are taking the bond money, that's the cheapest money that we have. So that is for, allocated for capital improvement projects mostly. But there might be other, I'm looking at what if in 2022 or 23, we had to increase one or two cents? We already seen the garbage, you know, that has been set apart, a separate fund from end user. You know, I personally feel two cents is good. And if we can do it, three cents for me is like, I don't think we will be able to achieve. Like the timing says is 2026. So four years, I had to pay tax for something that's getting in 2026. So that for me is like, how can we fast track it? And if we can, do we have the staff to do it, right? So those are the kind of questions that are going back of my mind to decide between the two cents scenario or the three cents scenario. So I am leaning more towards two, but I'm open to hear about three.
Okay. So in the model, it does plan to leverage the two cents year over year from the beginning year for the purpose of the fact that you're creating a long-range plan for capital investment. And in order to do that, to pay off the debt, you need to leverage some additional increment in your tax rate to do so. Otherwise, it comes from a natural growth in revenue, which draws against and competes against your natural growth in operations that you have just, you know, mentioned. There will be natural growth in operations that our resources need to pay for. Every four years, there is a revaluation process in your tax base. And at that point, every year, you even can reassess, is it still appropriate to leverage two cents addition or... The model says that you need to leverage it from here to pay for the long-range plan. But you as council every year are faced with that decision of what tax rate do you need to set for operations and your capital budget. So you revisit it every year. And then every four years, you get to adjust based on market conditions and take that into consideration as well. But to put things on the ground for our community, to fulfill things that they're interested in, it's going to take more than natural growth in revenue. And we clearly have articulated that. I can tell you without any tax rate increase, you can do maybe one project. If you go back and look at Davenport's information, sort of give you a starting point, which is current status, current situation, with the assumption of projecting growth in natural revenues and growth in expenditures for our operations, you might be able to take on one additional project in the next five years without a tax rate increase. And I think that's maybe a perspective that we need to put out front and center. But to do things for the community that they seem to be, in some cases, willing to leverage their tax rate for investment to do more, it will take that increase.
All right, that is helpful. So what is the difference between the two and the three, the one in pink, right? That's what is missing in the two cents that we covered in the three cents, right?
Correct, correct. He's just identifying that there's some change between the models.
Let me mute Martha, hold on. Okay, better. So, okay, so that's the change, right? Like the four projects is public facility? Can you read that out loud, please? I cannot.
I'm sorry, public facility?
No, the difference between the 39 and the 56, where the money is going towards the delta projects.
Okay, so there's some changes here in how much you can leverage between this case and this case for the future parks. And then there's a change in really these projects you are not able to leverage with the two cent model. With a three cent model, you can fold those in and out here. Again, I do feel like we are getting very prescriptive in really what projects you want in there to answer the question, how much do you want to leverage and invest in the community to get the capacity, not only with bonds, but with installment financing, to leverage our debt capacity more effectively across the five-year picture? Martha, you had a comment about the tax rate?
Thank you, Jeannie. Just another perspective on the way to look at that as you continue your discussion is, the tax rate is an estimated calculated value to cover your additional debt service costs for the amount of money you want to borrow. And all of that is very specifically related to the timing and the structure of the projects. So I just want, just a different perspective of how to look at that tax rate that you're considering. It really is to cover your debt service capacity without putting any additional burden on your operating budget. The primary difference between your two and three cent models is the building up of capacity, I'd say primarily for land acquisitions. So as you talk about our capacity, and clearly one of the lessons we learned from 2012 was getting those projects shovel ready to deliver, and we've been doing that. Three, three of those projects are in process right now. So just some things to think about as you evaluate this for yourselves.
Can't believe Assistant Town Manager Zidman, you had a comment?
Thanks, Jeannie. Just wanted to offer a couple food for thought sort of items, particularly in returns to, in regards to, excuse me, the capacity issue that I think a couple of folks have talked about. You know, when the last round of bonds, we did have some challenges in terms of timing and how quickly we turned things around. And so I think that's a legitimate issue to raise. I would suggest, you know, first and foremost, we've learned some lessons from those other processes and projects that we are better prepared now. Would also remind you that we have two full-time capital project managers now on staff that are doing much of the work that's associated with these capital projects. So that's a significant asset for us as a town. Would also just point out, you know, for example, the public works facility is a $16 million facility, but that doesn't mean that it's three times the work of a $5 or $6 million fire station. The work for our staff in those situations is going to be similar so that, you know, a couple of those bigger projects are part of what the total capacity is about. And then also, a lot of what you're talking about is land acquisition. And so while things that we need to put onto the ground are work-intensive for our staff, the acquisition of that property is not equally intensive. And so we have some flexibility there for you to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Let me see, I think I may have lost track a little bit here. Let's see who's next. Councilmember Fender, I think you might be next with a comment?
Yeah, so I like what Nancy put in the chat, oh, I can't talk. I like what Nancy put in here that we can read. That case one is 23 point, or case one equates to 23.3 million in a bond issuance. And case two equates to 40 million. And I guess, given that, I'm wondering, can we look at something? I mean, so does that mean if we all agreed on case two, that in the, when we go and ask for a bond referendum, we're going to be asking for an amount of 40 million? Is that what that means?
Yes, in this example, so Davenport did try to break out really what is your total geo-bond associated project rate?
Oh!
Yes.
That's what I needed to look at. That's what I was trying to figure out.
I should have been more clear, that's where that's at. So yes, that would be what they're suggesting would be the total ask of investment for the bond referendum.
Okay.
And we would align the projects to that through the ballot question.
Okay. So given that, I mean, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Johnson that I would want the feedback from the public. But my gut feeling is that asking for 40 million on the bond referendum is very much on the high side. But that would be a big ask. Because I remember from our discussions on the bond last year that I thought most of the council was more leaning toward an amount of 25 million at that point. So, yeah, I would want feedback from the public if they are really willing, before we went and asked for 40 million, are they really willing to go for that amount? Otherwise, I'd be inclined for somewhere in between case one and case two.
Okay. Somewhere in between case one and case two. And public input is important. I think everybody agrees public input is important. Let's not, you know, discount, we have received some input already. The other thing is, the intention of a bond referendum is literally to ask the voters for input and authority. So that in and of itself, I mean, there's even a public hearing that we have to formally go through. But what it sounds like is you want another round of input from the community on really what you want to leverage. And that's going to take time.
Yeah, I guess, um, you know, some sort of litmus test. I mean, I, I agree exactly what you're saying is, I mean, essentially putting a, a referendum on the ballot is asking for feedback from the public. I would just hate to put forty million dollars on there and, and have it vote, you know, it's not approved. So I would be inclined for somewhere in the middle there.
Okay. So in that case, um, let me make sure that I've heard from everybody. So I think we're going into comment number two. Uh, Council member Robati.
Yeah, I don't think that we should necessarily frame it as like, oh my God, we're asking the voters for so much money, which, I mean, it is a significant amount of money, of course. But I think that the way to frame it is as an investment in the future of the town. This is a good time to get money, to invest in the future of the town. Rates are low, they will not stay low. So I think that, I mean, I don't know, I think that, I think how we talk about this is important. You know, I think that if all of the projects on the list are important, and we have all agreed that they are important to the quality of life for the town, then I think that, you know, I think that we have the right people in place now to get, you know, to get these projects done in a timely manner. And I think that, you know, I think that it's a good time to think big.
That's a nice slogan.
Thank you. You can use that.
All right, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
So Ann and I are on the same wavelength, and, and she's correct. It is an investment in our community, and that's how we framed it in the past, um, that this bond was an investment in the community and it was a way to, um, bring projects forward into fruition. So I, I am, I am fine with all that. I, I, I just know that in the past, we also had the, and I know we can't do in-person events right now, so it's, it's much more difficult. But in the past, when we had the public come into council chambers and we had stations set up, and they actually weighed in as to what tax rate they could tolerate. And they weighed in on the, um, the projects that, that mattered the most to them. And, um, you know, and we had those broad category, categories, and they're the same categories, quite frankly. Um, we had those broad categories already kind of identified to help, help with the conversation with the public. But I think it's really important, um, that, that the public understand the, the dollar amounts we're talking about here. So to your point, Jeannie, the survey was very, very good, and, and we got some good feedback, but it wasn't, it wasn't specific. There weren't specific amounts identified. And that, that's kind of where the rubber hits the road.
Right.
And so if we want, and we do, we all do want this to be successful, we need to, um, we need to bring the public in on this conversation we're having right now. And, and allow them to, you know, to weigh in and give their thoughts on a, um, forty million dollar bond versus a twenty-three point three or something in between. And so, I, and I don't know how we do that, but, um, but that's really important, that they, they hear the dollar amounts, and again, and I'm going to repeat what I said before, and what it means to them. Um, the actual, you know, whether it's that, that yearly increase that, or the, you know, separated out by monthly, you know, what it means in a monthly increase, however, however we, we choose to share it, um, so they, that they have a, a better handle on what we're actually talking about.
Okay, thank you. That's good input. Assistant Town Manager Zudma, did you have a, a comment tonight?
A, a comment, a suggestion perhaps? Um, if, if you could maybe highlight for council briefly what the sort of next steps are, what the timeline is, and also what our communication strategy is? And I know our intention, uh, was to try to get a decision tonight potentially about this. But what, what does that decision timeframe look like as well? And could this be something that is discussed, uh, at next week's meeting if necessary? And how does that impact your timeline?
No, I appreciate that. Um, so I was getting ready to move council towards a wrap-up on this. I think I've heard, um, some, some compelling interest. As a part of the communications plan, it was at this point that council give us some guy, clear guidance and direction to be able to go out to the community and, and start the process of educating what it is you're interested in doing. Um, I think the caveat here that I'm hearing from several council members is you're sort of stuck between the twenty-five million and the forty million, it's an amusement round numbers of investment and what it means to that, to the community itself. Um, and, and doing that, another round of getting some feedback and input from the community, so it'd be more than just an educational component, but still an engagement. I, I think that's sort of what I'm hearing from several members. I do hear more, and this, this really goes back to even your previous conversation, more propensity for potentially wanting to leverage more dollars, which is probably aligned better with case two. But you want to check in with the community at some point, um, and, and see if that's valid or not. So there's not a wholesale shocker to the community, because in all fairness, Morrisville has tend to ask for fourteen million or twenty million for bonds. We've, we've never carried it to forty. And I'll also remind you, we've never carried the planning of, of our total debt capacity in this way over a long-range plan of five years with, um, total debt, knowing our total debt capacity, what that might look like, and, and planning and leveraging that. So it does warrant and lead us to bigger, um, bigger investment dollars at that point. So I think that's what I'm hearing from council, that, that we need to sort of find a place in between case, case one and case two, but articulate that to the community where you're at, get another round of feedback, and then I need to bring some information, back to you to proceed. Um, we are against the timeline. So in looking at bond council, because this bond is a part of the equation here when you're talking your total debt capacity picture, we need to make sure that we're confident when we leverage the debt or the bond, um, language when we finalize it, that we know clearly what we potentially going to have to leverage in incremental tax rates for that plus the installment financing. That comes, uh, in June, in which we have to have that, that formal adoption, um, for the ballot language. So I have a small window to turn, um, around information to the community, get information from them, and bring it back to council, uh, to be able to meet that deadline. So that's pretty much where I think we're at. Any comments or questions? I think from staff, I think it's heard what, what we can from this discussion. Um, Martha's typing in, so let me just take a pause there. She's working on it. Oh, there, oh, there she goes. Jeannie, please clarify when council needs to finalize their recommendation. Uh, when council needs to finalize their, their recommendation for the overall, um... I, I mentioned that I need to have a ballot finalized and adopted in June. So really, I only have the rest of March and the first part of April to really do an outreach to the community and then turn something around to council in that timeframe. So I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, the end of April is when I would be able to, or when I need to reach back out to council and get the final recommendation on that. Mayor Pro Tim, you had a comment? And I don't have the calendar in front of me, so.
So Jeannie, we, we all can help with that. I, I, I think what I'm, I'm hearing from, you know, and from myself and others, is that we need, uh, need a little more, um, input from the public, and we can get that ourselves by reaching out. So I guess what I would ask is, um, can you, can you give us, and I know you have in the past, your last presentation, can you give us a couple of, um, quick bullets on this? Um, you know, here's what a forty million dollar bond means, here's what a twenty-three million dollar bond means, here's, um, what two cents means to you, here's what three cents means to you. And I don't, I mean, like, really quick. You know, don't take more than fifteen minutes to, to give us what you've already given us, but in one, one little email. And then that's something each one of us then can use as we're talking to folks. And we can, you know, find out, um, ourselves too, what, what the, you know, temperature is out there. But, but you need to do your work too, for sure. But I think maybe that would, um, that might be helpful to each one of us too.
Certainly, I can definitely do that. That would be a part of this round of education. Anyway, if you had decided today that you said case two, then my next step is to go around, go back and pull together, prepare that type of material that helps educate the community on what this forty thousand dollar investment would mean, um, how much it would impact them at varying levels of households. So yes, that, that falls in line, it's just at this point, we're dealing with two different versions, uh, that we are, we would go out to it. Thank you. Uh, Martha, I have another comment. Oh, okay, she's, she's good, I think now. I think Mayor Pro Tim may have covered what she was looking for. Council member Garamella, did you have a question?
No, I was saying, I think, uh, it's, it's already late, so I want to close this.
All right, well, we're, we're done, we're wrapped up. And I want you to know, you did give input. It's just you need to have one more extra step before getting to, uh, the place of the decision.
So, so Jeannie, like, you know, I was remembering, um, Town of Cary, you know, when they did, they had, um, I think it was in person, but like, they had a white board, you know, kind of a thing, uh, where the entire council sat together and said, okay, you know, we'll add this, we'll add this, you know? Okay, then this finance on the side said, okay, if you do this, this is what it will cost. And i- it was a very nice interaction by end of that meeting, they had nailed everything and no questions asked after that. So I, I see like, um, all of us struggle someplace, you know, saying this or that. So I, I don't know, like, if it is worth to use next hour, uh, meeting, um, to just go through certain, certain exercises, you know, you can talk to them. I think they did a wonderful job, because I, everyone from their council really liked that session.
Okay, absolutely. We've talked to them in the past, and we can certainly reach back out again and see if there was something new they tried. So at this point, I think we have as much as we can, can, can glean from this conversation, and staff will go back and rework a few things and, and bring more information forward to try to keep us on our forward momentum. So I appreciate, uh, the conversation tonight. Thank you very much. Mayor?
Ms. Hook, great conversation, great presentations. Thank you for walking us through all that. Fellow council members, good job tonight. We didn't get through as much as we wanted, but what we did, we made some good progress on, so thank you all very much, and thank you to staff. Thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Our next meeting will be virtual as well, next Tuesday, March twenty-third at six P.M. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrissville.org or visit www.townofmorrissville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I've entertained a motion to adjourn. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Recognize Council member Rao, please.
Second.
Okay, Town clerk Smith will please do a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn. Council member Fender?
Aye.
Council member Garamella?
Aye.
Council member Rao? Council member Robati?
Aye.
Council member Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
Thank you, it is nine fifty-seven, we are adjourned. Thank you all.